I call the order this Grand Haven City Council's special work session. It is November 4th, 2019. Linda, would you call the roll, please?
Minnetza?
Here.
Bruger?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
Okay, well.
Here. We have two items on our work session agenda this evening. The first, Sixth Street and Adams Flooding Remediation Options. And I was gonna ask Tony McGee to come up, and Derek beat him to the punch.
Yeah, just wanted, you know, Tony introduced Tony. Derek Gatis, Public Works Director. Tony's been, and his crew's been working really hard on giving us some options. And they first came to me, and I said, "Go back to the drawing board." So, you'll see the first one as part of it. But Tony's got a really great presentation on our problem over there, or potential solutions. So, I'll turn it over to him.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. He's a great warm-up act, isn't he?
That's right.
Thank you. This is an area of town that Derek's had us looking at off and on for the last five, six months, trying to figure out some different options we could do over there, and looking at the area. So, I'm gonna kinda give you, this is not intentionally bad English, this I ain't seen much of. Has anybody up here actually seen Love of the Game, Kevin Costner, Tigers? So, when he goes to the mound, and he realizes he's pitching a perfect game, and his catcher comes out, and he goes, "Is that scoreboard right?" And he goes, "It is." And the catcher's like, "This I ain't seen much of, this I've never seen anything of." And that kinda gets to our water situation as right now. Lake Michigan right now is so high in the water levels in our lakefront communities and water tables, that if you are under 33 years old, you've never seen it this high. If you are under 101 years old, you've never seen it higher than it is right now. So, we are in conditions that have hardly been seen in the last century. That's good to keep in mind as we do. And what's even more interesting with that, as you look up here, is after a few years, we're above the 86 levels at or above them, but we were doing emergency dredging just six years ago in 2013. Remember, everybody was panicking up and down the Great Lakes. So, in six years, we went from record lows to record highs. And so, we're seeing swings in the Lake Michigan like we've never seen before in the basin. We're probably not done. September was incredibly rainy, October was as well, and we had some really bad November storms coming. So, we're probably gonna see more erosion yet, and we're gonna see some more flooding issues. Next year's not gonna be any better. Right now, they're forecasting that we're gonna start 2020 11 inches higher than we started 2019. So, that's a few more up from where we are right now for perspective. We're not gonna go 11 between now and then, but we are gonna start next year 11 inches higher than we started this last year. And we usually start a year lower than the previous year. So, we go up, back down, and up. So, we've not seen the last of this. Kind of impact on coastal communities here in Grand Haven, the area that's seen the worst of it is this area right here, what I'm calling the Adams North Neighborhood, is where you've seen most of your flooding issues here. This is typical in any low-lying area we're seeing around the state right now, up and down the shoreline are experienced ones. The city manager of New Buffalo called me in a panic Thursday night when we had the rain and the southwest winds, because their 28-acre waterfront area was underwater, their entire beachfront, because the wind's blowing in. So, what people are doing, they're looking at these high water levels, they're assessing what they can do, and it's going on every right now. It's unseen if this is our new normal. Like I said, we're seeing these wild swings, or is this gonna go away and return back to our normal flows? So, what communities are trying to decide is, if we're gonna address these issues, are we gonna wait till the water recede? And if we do address it, are we gonna do something temporary, or are we gonna look for a permanent fix, assuming this is the new normal? We've done several assessments of this area, kinda looking at some different options that you could to address, and I'll get into those here in a minute. Based on our visual inspections in the neighborhood, we've had several surveyors, engineers walking the area, looking at the neighborhood. You have elevations where the private properties are actually draining into the streets. The streets aren't draining into the private properties, and I'll get into that in a minute. We had LiDAR information applied over that, and I'm gonna get to a map here in just a second, kinda walk you through it after this. This is for perspective. This entire area here in blue of the neighborhood, that is all FEMA-designated flood zone. So, this is an area pro-deflowny based on FEMA analysis. But it's interesting, when you get to the LiDAR here, the darker areas are the higher areas, and so the lighter areas are the lower areas in there. The lowest point in the entire neighborhood are the streets right in here. You got a couple catch bases here and here, that basically everything drains here. So, you got a high spot here that drains to here, you have high areas here that drain this way, high areas this way that drain that way. So, everything's basically draining to those areas within the neighborhood, and that's the topography that shows where everything is. Your highest there is actually in the entire area is this over here, and that drains off that way as well. So, we've looked at a couple options. Don't anybody throw anything at the first one. This is the, if you pretend this is the new normal, you wanted to deal with everything. Basically, developing a stormwater force main system for the neighborhood, which would get rid of, because what's happening now, lake levels are coming up, we're getting head pressure, and the stormwater can't push out into the lake right now. So, let's say, and it's backing up through the pipes and into the streets, till the head pressure goes down, then it leaks out, and that's what you guys are seeing happen now. First way to get around it is basically build a force main system that deals with your stormwater there, so the head pressure on your outlet is not an issue anymore. So, that would be about $5.1 to $5.3 million to build a new storm system, it's a force main storm system for that entire neighborhood. That's all your permitting, engineering, and construction. Thing to keep in mind is, it's not simply just putting a sump pump at the end of the thing. This is stormwater, so you need a pump, you need a backup generator, you need a grinder for anything that's gonna hit that pump before it hits it, to shred it up before it hits the pump and go in the water. So, it's not, everybody's like, "Well, why don't we just put a sump pump in and blow it out?" It's not that simple. You'll be changing that sump pump out every day, twice a day. So, that was the first option. That's the one we came to, and Derek laughed, shook his head. He wanted to throw something at me. And he goes, "Go find something else." So, next thing we came up with, and Pat, you might remember this, this is similar to what we came up with as a concept with the flooding at the hospital over at the school there. And it's basically doing a cistern underground to take over. So, as the streets start to fill up, it would come over into that cistern until the groundwater or the head pressure on the outfall released enough, it'd come back in and go out to the thing. So, issue with that is, it's not permanent. I mean, in terms of eventually, water will surpass if we keep getting it. And it's pretty high cost, obviously. We probably have to acquire some land to bury the cistern over there. So, you're still talking $3.2 to $3.75 million for something that's not an ideal situation. This is one that a couple communities are looking at right now. We're looking at, we're calling it the plug and pump. It's basically, because again, it all stems from, there's two really main issues causing your flooding over there. The first is, I talked about, is the head pressure that's not allowing stuff to go to the storm drain. The other is groundwater is just simply up. So, everything's saturated, the water's got no ability to perk in the ground, so it's going everywhere it can, basements, streets, everything else. What you could do to at least get it out of, this wouldn't help the houses, but it would help the city infrastructure, is we basically plug the line, so the head pressure wasn't affecting the storm on that side. We put a pumping system just behind that plug, and that would pump over the outfall and into the lake. So, you'd at least drain all the water out of the storm system and deal with it that way. And that'd be about $1.5 to $1.7 million. And again, most of that is the pump system itself, because of all the redundancies, the backup generators, the grinders, all that stuff that have to go in it to make sure it's functioning. Derek doesn't have to run guys out there twice a day to unplug it while they're in heavy rain seasons. Home flooding is obviously a big issue over there. I was talking to soils instructors the other day, we do a lot of work with them, and one of their guys used to live in the neighborhood, he goes, "We get flooded in my basement." And I used to live there every 10, 15 years. So, the water table would come up, it would come into our basement, and we'd have to deal with it. If you guys are looking to address the stormwater, to do anything but addressing it in your streets and your stormwater, any of these options we just talked about's not gonna address it under the current situations, because what it is, is groundwater coming up. If somebody wanted to address it for the house itself, typical cost right now is about $45,000 to elevate a house to get it above those groundwater issues. That's what you could do if you wanted to, if somebody wanted to address the house thing. So, moving forward, it's really, you got two options. It is the wait and see, when the water will recede eventually, whether it's the next year or is it the year after? When Lake Michigan starts to lower again, we get the, allow the head pressure not coming into that storm outlet, it'll start draining like it always has, and the groundwater will lower. If you don't wanna wait to see if that would happen, we can explore one of the other options. The other one we're actually pricing out right now is actually raising all the roads up, so you get them out of that. But you're still gonna be in that same, there's no inexpensive, easy way to address what you're dealing with here, and I guess the short answer to the story. So, it's a, we wait a year or two, see what happens. I know that's not what anybody wants to hear, but it's the reality of the situation we're dealing with with these high water levels, and you're not alone in this. Every community up and down the lakeshore is. Literally, everyone is. Or we can start exploring one of these options if you wanted to, is a temporary to permanent solution that you'll never have flooding in your municipal infrastructure in that part of town again. So, with that, happy, entertaining. Any questions you have?
Well, I thought it was interesting that you say that the properties are flooding the streets, not the other way around. And that's kinda what we heard early on in the year, that all this water in the street is flooding in my property. Now, you're saying that that is not the case, so that's...
Yeah. Can you see where the residential lots are? Your low point really are the streets here and here, and that's why you have those catch bases here and here, because those are the natural low spots. And with the ground as saturated as it is, I was saying with the water level, water can't run into the ground, it's hitting people's lots. So, it's coming off these higher spots and running in towards the streets, because it can't perk in the ground like it normally would. This is off some, you know, publicly available data. If you wanna do a full hydrology study, we could do that, but it's gonna show you the same results.
Yeah, well, water runs downhill.
Exactly.
It's what it is. No, and it's not that it's not an issue, but it is, and these are kind of extraordinary times, and there is not a whole lot that, other than the cheapest fix is a million and a half dollars. So, but anyway, I thought that was interesting, because we kinda heard it was the other way around, so that makes sense.
Your Honor, I just wanted to give you an update on our other flooding areas over on Harbor Island Drive and Coho Drive. I mean, to date, we just finished all the calculations. We spent just north of six figures on trying to keep those intersections open. So, this is, yeah, even a million and a half dollars seems like a lot of money, but, you know, just maintaining a couple intersections for all summer long with equipment and manpower and the materials. You guys authorized, you know, $20,000 worth of materials to purchase, you know, for Harbor Island Drive there. And so, yeah, I mean, this is incredible times, like you said, and we're gonna keep dealing with that until it recedes.
Yep.
The estimates that they gave us for mitigating that permanently were in excess of, I think it was $300,000 for both intersections, to raise them up, you know, significantly out of the flood plain, and so they weren't impacted. So, yeah, those are just two intersections, let alone our boat launch area that we didn't even get a price for that. To raise that thing, the whole thing up, you know, a couple feet, isn't, just isn't cost-effective.
Now, does that include that section on the way to the BLP where the, is that one of the intersections there where you...
No. Harbor Island Drive at US 31 by Halls, that's been our worst one.
Oh, and the other side, right.
And then Coho Drive where Harbor Island Drive goes north of the boat launch.
Right. That's the one I was referring to, yeah.
Yeah. Well, so then, as levels continue to rise, we're getting standing water in the driveway that goes to the BLP plant and/or linear park, so...
Well, and the trick to all that is, for anybody that ventures through there, which I quit, because my little 14-inch tire tires aren't gonna, but you don't, you can't see what size holes that are developing underneath, and the more you have water standing there, the more you're degrading the road surface. So, just, if you see that, just be careful.
Yes. Okay.
Are there any other comments?
Yeah, if I could. You know, we've seen water on those roads when it's heavy rains, whether it's running downhill from those high spots, collecting there, whether it's running onto private property or vice versa. Last big rain we had, I went out there and watched, and I saw water flowing out of the storm drains onto the street. So, clearly, your outfall is underwater. Your storm sewer is filled with water, and when you get more water in, it's literally pushing itself out onto the street. So, it can't get rid of the water that is running on the roads. And if that accumulates and gets high enough, it's going to run onto private property. And that one corner lot there right at Adams and Fifth is lower than the street. I can stand there and tell you that. I don't care what your LiDAR says, I stood there and looked at it, it's lower. That may be the only lot that's that much lower, but it is. You know, I don't know how fine your resolution is here. But regardless, the storm sewer problem in this area, it's not functioning. It's become routine now, when there's rains, that there's water in those roads, whether, and there's certainly an impact on private property as well as the functionality of the roads. So, I was intrigued with what you have referred to as option three, and I envisioned as a, basically, a weir or a caisson or a lift station, as Derek calls it, which maybe basically have a rim higher than the river, pump, let water flow into it by gravity, if you need to chew it up before you get to your pump. That makes sense. Pump it up over the side and out, and it can't flow back in. You were suggesting a backflow preventer or check valve or something like that, which is another mechanical device that's going to take maintenance. If you could just do it with a wall, seems like that'd be simpler.
You could almost see like a cofferdam type situation in that backside, right?
Exactly. And so, I mean, sticking that at the outfall of your sewer pipe, putting in the appropriate mechanical devices to make, get the water up and over and out, that would at least relieve one problem. And I don't know, if that's this million and a half bucks, that's still a pretty good size price. But that would at least, and I don't know if you need to do that with every storm sewer out there, how many different outfalls we're talking about? Is it just the one? I mean, it seems like that would be something that we could at least get a firm design on, or at least enough so that we could get a good price, other than this appears to be one of those pulled out of the air prices, like something like a million and a half bucks. So, I mean, to me, that seems like something that ought to be investigated in more detail. And I think that's something that could give some relief to this neighborhood. Nothing that we suggested up till now was anything about getting water off the private property, it was all about making our streets not flow on private property, getting rid of the water that's in them. If we made things worse with some of the land forming we've done around Grand Landing, which people speculate that that's the case, I don't know if it is or not, but at least we could relieve whatever is running down the streets and gutters and get rid of it. I think that's where we had directed you to look some months ago, and that sounds like your option three.
Yeah, we haven't had any issues with any other storm outlets. I mean, they're all underwater, but they're...
Well, they're not backing up routinely.
Well, and, because the elevation is higher in those locations. So, yeah, they're still backcharging, for sure, right down here underneath the Brass River. We had a failure just the other day, and, you know, that was backcharged.
I saw that.
You did?
Yes, I did. I took a picture of it and sent it to you.
Yep.
Yeah, this is probably your lowest point in the entire community right here.
So, I, you know, coming back to the Grand Landing thing, because I know people have asked if the Grand Landing development had a big influence on this, you know, what's your professional opinion on, I know you probably, I don't know if you looked at that at all, but is water from there flowing onto...
Right now, it breaks right about through here, so about this line, the water flows back that way, and right about here flows this way. So, the first, say, 70 feet of Grand Landing flows towards the city street, and everything behind it flows away.
Well, the video that I took of this neighborhood, in particular, the corner of Adams and Fifth, and just as Bob said, in particular, the one house on the corner is definitely below street level. And I, you know, I've maintained that it's our responsibility, as far as the city goes, to address the water that lands on the street or that flows into the street, and make sure that it goes away. The video that I shot, and I think what we can see just from walking out there, is very evident that the storm flow is not going down the way it's supposed to. So, again, as Bob said, option three, the pump and plug and pump, or whatever it is, I think has been the, what I anticipated coming back to us as a good solution. So, I'd be very interested in looking forward, looking for more information on that to actually implement it, because it's been a problem, yes, this year, but it's been a problem for a number of years in that particular neighborhood. So, I think at the very least, we as the city have to maintain the street. One of the reasons for doing that, very simply, at least recently, is we had to put a slow no-wake zone sign on the road, because what happens when that backs up, cars go through and whoof, their tires splash the water right over the curb, right onto the people's property. So, at the very least, we've gotta get rid of that. That's my opinion there. Thanks for the report, though.
No other questions? Comments? Observations? All right.
Lot of water.
Thanks. It is. And more to come. All right, our second item, Derek doesn't go very far, the community center facade renovation.
More good news from Derek.
Yeah.
So, Derek, so actually, I'm gonna introduce Evan Laduke. He's the one, he's the architect that's working for Abner's, that's doing the planning and designing of this, and so he'll go over the bid review and comparisons real quickly.
All right.
Thank you, Derek. Just to review, the project principally is composed of four components, if I can get this to work. The fascia, removal and replacement of the fascia, the west stair, the repair of the west stair, the enclosure of the canopy over the entrance, and then the reconstruction of the planter into a terrace area, and the opening of doors into the ballroom area. The, we received bids on the project. The budget of the project was $300,004, and they went all the way up to $709,000. We received the bids because of the estimated, we asked the contractors, provided us that information. One, it was removed from the bid selection process. The bill in October, based on a rendering and an outline of the program contract, that would have been for the project. In addition, what am I doing wrong? I'm sorry.
We got it.
Sorry, this is my, that's it.
Write that.
That's, yes.
Yeah, so this is your write line.
Okay. Well, what Derek asked us to do is predicated on the cost estimates and the schedule of values that we got from the contractors, is to break out which each of the components would cost, so that we could take a look at the options that the council may have in moving the project forward. What we did was to develop cost parameters for the fascia, and again, this would have to be negotiated with, if you selected a low bidder from the individual, the contractors who bid it on the project, we would negotiate the actual costs on these things with the contractor. But the fascia, we were estimating the cost, the developed cost parameters from the actual numbers that the contractors gave us. For the fascia would be $100 to $130,000. The west stair replacement would be $35,000 to $50,000. One of the other things, too, that we had bid was the fact that there's a short window of opportunity for the contractor to come in and make these type of improvements, because the community center will continue to operate. So, we had given them two- and four-week periods to come in, demo the stairs, reconstruct them, and make them operational. And that might have been part of the reasoning behind the increase in cost, as well as the fact that they would be dealing with mobilizing and demobilizing on the weekends, when the ballroom and other parts of the center would be operational. The terrace and ballroom entrance, the cost parameters were $295 to $325,000, and the foyer enclosure, that's the covered entry, was $142,000 to $155,000. This gives you an idea of what each one of the components would cost. Derek also asked us, and we're trying to refine this in terms of giving you options to combine the projects, to still be within the $300,000 in terms of the amount of monies that are available for the improvements, which would be a combination of the fascia and west stair for $135,000 to $180,000, or a combination of the terrace and foyer enclosure, which is, would be the most expensive option, $437,000 to $480,000. And then, an option that would include the west stair improvements, the fascia and the foyer enclosure, which would be $270,000 to $335,000. And then, the fourth option, a west stair, fascia, and terrace, which is the most expensive option, which is $430,000 to $505,000. And again, we can refine these options to reflect the direction that the council wants to go in terms of moving the project forward.
All right. Anybody have any comments or questions on the plan?
We had a penny for every time someone came back to us, said the cost came in higher than we anticipated. We could probably pay for the project.
Yes.
Has the, I guess, two questions that I have. One, not necessarily for you, I think there may be for staff. The first question is, how much money did we have left in the millage? And then, the second question, if there's not enough there, would be, has the community center board weighed in on this at all? Because if we have to prioritize things and cut some out, I'd like to get their input to find out what's most important to them.
Oh, there it is. Yeah, my memo in the packet, I can talk to Amy Besinger, finance director, about what we have left to collect and what we've collected. So, we have approximately $651,000 available, and we'll collect an additional $848,000 over this year and next year. That's if you don't change the millage rate for the community center millage, because you still have the authority to change that. So, what you collected last year, I think a couple years ago, something happened that we reduced it for a year. But, so with that said, if you kept it the same, and we did the project, we'd still have $900,000, just over $900,000 left in that fund from the millage.
And then, to the second part of that, has the community center board weighed in again on this, since we got that back? I would anticipate they haven't yet.
No, they haven't. Literally, we opened the bids, then we, Abner's will right to work, trying to, you know, had it come in at or under budget, we wouldn't be here tonight. We'd be asking for an award. So, they've been working diligently to carve this up and see what these options just might be, what does the council have a tolerance for spending, if all, or if any.
Okay. Well, I think my thoughts would be to get some input from the community center, but that'd be my two cents, and those were my questions. Thank you.
Derek, what if we decided to shut the community center down with renovations going on? And then, how long would it take if they got right on it, stayed on it? And how much money would be saved by doing that?
I'm not sure. What we did when we did our pre-bid meeting with the contractors and working with the administrators for the community center, we were able to carve out a four-week period that the contractors felt comfortable with, in terms of being able to move the project forward. The impact on the interior of the building is the emergency exiting out of the west stair, which again, all of the contractors felt that they could do within a two-week period. So, from that standpoint, that was very doable. The major portion of the terrace project is an exterior project. The only thing that they have to do is to cut the doorway to the terrace. So, again, that's pretty minimal. The major, the major impact on, I think, the functioning of the community center would be the enclosure, the foyer, but you have other entrances and exits to the building. I'm not, I'm not sure if closing down the facility would have a tremendous impact. We had looked at even, I think because the use of the facility on the weekend intensifies, that's why we focused on a two- to four-week period where there was minimal use in the center. And I think the contractors felt pretty comfortable with the schedule for construction. So, I don't think by closing the center down, I don't think we would gain a tremendous amount in terms of savings.
Good question.
I wish I could say we could close it down and save $300,000. We'd be right in budget, but that's definitely not gonna be the case.
Well, I have a couple of questions, but we're out of time for work session, so if this could come back during our regular meeting, don't go away.
Is it, my clock is not working on here. Oops, it's 7:29. We got one whole minute.
Oh, why couldn't I ask? Couldn't have got an answer?
Yeah. All right. At this point, we will stop our, in our work session. We can, we'll pick it up again after, once we're started with our council meeting, but I think there's some folks out in the foyer that are cutting cake, so I think it's time to take a break.
I'd like to say something first, you know, I'd like, just to take a moment here. I know you didn't really want to be recognized and anything else for all your hard work, but...
but I'd like to take a moment here just to recognize Mayor McHale for her years of public service, as a councilperson, as a mayor, and her countless hours and the committee works that you've done. Also for your dedication to the city of Grand Haven. You know, being a mayor, you need to, you have the passion, the drive, to devote countless hours of being away from home and answering to all. As mayor, you represented the council and all of our decisions. Whether you liked them or not, you stood behind them, and you actually stood there for us. When we voted on something, if it was three to two, and you followed through on it. So I just want to thank you very hard for all your hard work that you've done, and the sixteen years you put in. I know, because I've been here, I've been here with you, so. And if anyone else, well, I'd like to come up and say a few words, and to the mayor, I'd most appreciate if you'd come forward and acknowledge her as our mayor, and anything else, it would be very good. And after that, we have some cake and coffee out there for her, and also.
Something here. Well, Mayor, when a public safety officer does something outstanding or excellent, many times we give them a commendation. So tonight, we have one for you. And we just came to tell you how much we appreciate your work as mayor, how much we appreciate your support over the years for the public safety department, and I just want to read you your commendation, and then have you come forward, and as you have given so many over the years, we'd like to give one to you. Commendation, Grand Haven Department of Public Safety, presented to Mayor Jerry McHale, for her selfless dedication to the citizens of Grand Haven, and her unwavering support for community safety. The members of the Grand Haven Department of Public Safety salute Mayor McHale, and we're honored to serve under her leadership.
We're not done with you. Mayor McHale, on behalf of the Community Development Department, Neighborhood Housing Services, and the Community Center, we'd just like to thank you for all the support you've given us over the years, and you've been a great mayor to work under. We just have a little gift for you, to appreciate you and have you think of us often in your time of leisure, and appreciate all the many hours that you put into supporting us.
You don't know what that is, do you?
Mayor, on behalf of the Department of Public Works, I've, I've worked under you for a couple of years now, and just been very gracious and thankful for your dedication to the city and making it a better place. And thank you for supporting our department and, and all that we do here in Grand Haven. So you get to open this. You might know what that is, though. Something we're pretty good at.
I gotta, I gotta see it. But I gotta see it, I gotta see it in person. All right.
You might find that on, on a street over on the east side sometimes.
Well, I know I've put a lot of people through this. It's a lot more fun doing it to somebody else than having them do it to you. So, but this is the greatest group of people ever. So appreciate all of them, and all the work that they do to make this a great place to live. And thank you all much.
We're going to take a few minutes here. We got some cake and stuff out there. See if you all want to come out there. That'd be nice. Take a few minutes.
Man, shame idea.
The acid?
Acid?
Yep, yep, yeah, yeah.
Okay then.
Eric, is Eric ready?
Say what?
Eric, ready?
Oh, is Eric, oh. One minute.
Ten seconds.
Ten seconds, alright.
Give you a little break to the city council meeting and let's do the council meeting now and sort of what you have in your ear to hear.
I call the order of this Grand Haven City Council meeting, and Linda, would you call the role, please?
Minnetza?
Here.
Bruger?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
McHale.
Here. Our invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Ray Paget, Grand Haven Community Baptist Church. Please remain standing after the prayer for the pledge of allegiance. I appreciate Ray being here tonight.
Well, on behalf of Grand Haven Community Baptist Church, Mayor McHale, we want to congratulate you and thank you again for your leadership for our community. Tomorrow, we vote for a new mayor, and we're going to ask God to give our city great wisdom and direction. I just wanted to read one passage from Daniel. It's from chapter two. That's a good reminder about leadership here in our city and also in our country. It says this, "Blessed be the name of God forever and ever, to whom belong wisdom and might. He changes times and seasons, he removes kings and sets up kings, and he gives wisdom to the wise and knowledge to those who have understanding." That's what we want to pray for, wisdom and understanding for our community as we move ahead. Father, we want to thank you for the leadership of Mayor McHale. And thank you for the wonderful recognition of that this evening by so many individuals and organizations. And so we pray that you bless and encourage her as she moves into another area, another stage of her life, that you would give her direction and fruitfulness as well. And then we remember that tomorrow, there is a vote for a new mayor. And so we would pray for this city. We pray for wisdom and discernment for those who vote. And then we would pray for unity, for the direction of Grand Haven City, and Father, for its future. And for that, we thank you in the name of our Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have a presentation this evening. I'm going to ask Marcia Peterson, the head of our historical commission and member of the museum board.
So this moves the way of God. And so, as your honor stated, I'm Marcia Peterson. I'm chair of the Historic Conservation District Commission. And we are here tonight for something very pleasant. And it's recognizing a new landmark, a new historic landmark. And the picture here shows 608 Washington Avenue, which is in the downtown district. And this is a four, American four-square home. And I love the history of it. And actually, if you want to find out a lot about the history of this building, the owner, Tony Sicconelli, has it down pat, and it's really very fascinating. But it's a reaction to the Victorian. And so you see this square looking very simple with natural elements within it. But what's so wonderful about it is that, that it also is so beautifully maintained. And our commission, just a second, I've got to make sure I'm hitting the right button. We, I didn't practice this.
Aim it over here.
Oh, over here?
Yep.
Oh, that's the problem, and the button is...
There you go.
You got it.
Whoa, too many. There you go.
Okay, there, alright, well, you had a chance to look at a picture. And the Sicconellis also have maintained the interior so beautifully. And why we approved it September nineteenth by this historic commission is that it represents all the things that we demand of a historic landmark. Its structure, its rich history, and it also reflects the elements of the city's cultural, economic, political, and architectural history. I used to do this for a living, believe it or not, but my clicker was different. It also represents a historical background, that what we have here is this home, it was owned originally and built by Henry J. Dornbos. And he was a very prominent businessman that became highly successful. And he, with his brother, he created the fresh fish, fresh and smoked fish, and it went beyond west of the Mississippi. And he was highly successful. But he also was very influential within the city. He opened the people's savings bank, and he served on many commissions. So if it's, where it's located, in fact, if you all decided to just go a little east and look across the street, you would find the Washington Square Inn or the Washington Inn. And so it fulfills that criteria as well, it's in a historic district. Now, our commission is excited to add this to one of the other ten landmarks that we have. And one of the things that we want people to know is that when you drive around Grand Haven, you see an awful lot of historic structures. We would like people to apply, and we want to let them know that it's quite easy to do so. Why would anyone do it? Well, for one thing, we can't tell you what to do with your home. In other words, we aren't going to tell you that your siding has to be a particular type, that you get to have that house the way you want it. But some of the benefits of it are that it includes marketing and tourism for Grand Haven. It's also an awareness of local history. You'll receive a historic plaque, and the markers and inclusions are also going to be something in our future walking tour. So how do you do it? Well, you simply go to grandhaven.org, hit City Services, you'll see the Historic Conservation District Commission. And then the last section down there will be landmark applications. And Tony, did you find it difficult or not to apply?
No.
No, okay. Probably because he knows it so well as well. So what I would like to do now is to have the mayor and myself present Tony and Michelle Sicconelli with the plaque and the certificate that recognizes their home as one of the eleven landmarks of historic designations by the Historic Conservation District Commission and the city. So Tony and Michelle?
Stand the podium.
We need the, we need the microphone picked or something. So it's like being at...
I know, it's so cool, isn't it? Everything's so cool. The plaque is cool, and we're asking Tony and Michelle to preserve that and put that to the side of their front door so that people can see it. Okay, and...
And we also have this citation, City of Grand Haven Historic Site, Washington Street Inn, the Dornbos home, 608 Washington, Anthony and Michelle Sicconelli, is listed in the city register in 2019. So we would like to think...
Thank you.
Congratulations, we're proud of it.
Yeah, no, I, no, I don't really have anything to say, but I...
Just don't go into the history.
No, I appreciate it, and I think it's a good opportunity for some of the residents also to consider, you know, applying. Because I was really kind of surprised that there was just eleven of us, and there's a lot of historic buildings and homes in the city that I think people would appreciate knowing, you know, where they're at and that type of thing, sure.
Right.
So thank you very much, it was very nice.
Thank you, thank you for the plug.
Right, don't get a free sign if they can tell you.
Too many letters.
I don't know if they could fit that many letters on a sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we are to approval of the regular consent and regular agendas. Pat, is there any changes?
Yes, your honor, I'd like to request that we add an item. I imagine under appointments, which you've already gone past.
Oh, alright.
But we did want to appoint Rich Butenheist tonight to the Construction Board of Appeals. He's submitted an application, we just got it in today, but we do have a case coming up, and we were hoping to have a full board. So we're hoping, he's a well-known reputable local builder with a great deal of experience, so...
Okay.
Recommend that you add that to the agenda. Other than that, we have no changes or adjustments.
Alright, is everybody...
I'm all set with that.
Because we need to, yeah, we need to have a full board, and it's, some important cases coming up, so. Alright, so I need a motion to accept the agendas with this one addition.
So moved, I'll make that motion.
I'll support it.
Alright, so then we need to vote.
Minnetza?
Yes.
Bruger?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
You want me to do the appointment now?
Yes, let's do that, take, have that taken care of.
This is to appoint Richard Butenheist to the Construction Board of Appeals with the term ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty.
Is he, is, I don't know, Rich, is he here?
Rich is not here.
Rich is not here, okay. So he knows that he's supposed to come and get sworn in?
Yep, he knows. And I spoke with Jennifer earlier too, and if he couldn't make it tonight, then we'll make sure he gets sworn in before the meeting.
Very good.
Cool. So we are ready to vote.
Can I get a motion in a second?
Oh, yeah, we had, yeah, Mike and Josh.
Mike and Josh.
Oh, and that one too.
That was for the agenda.
Oh, that was the agenda.
For the agenda, no, I'll make a motion.
I'll second. You're covered.
We got it covered.
Bruger?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Minnetza?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes. Alright. So moving along to the general business call of the audience. We, did we miss voting on the agendas, or we didn't, did we do that? There's too many things going on in my brain. Did we vote on the agendas?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so then we voted on the guy. So now we're moving to the general business call of the audience. Does anybody like to address council at this time?
Mayor McHale, City Council, my name is Roger Kotner. I have two items on my agenda tonight, a little bit less than you folks have tonight. First, I would like to, as a private citizen, express my gratitude to Mayor McHale and to Mr. Bruger. Mr. Bruger, you have an election tomorrow, but this could be your last night on council with Mayor McHale, so thank you. My second item on my agenda is as Duncan Park Commissioner. I appear tonight as president of the Duncan Park Commission. Council was not prepared to address the commission's request at its last meeting on October twenty-one, two thousand nineteen, for certain measures that I detailed in a letter to Mayor McHale earlier that month. After that meeting, I met with Mayor McHale, Councilman Scott, and Councilman Minnetza, and suggested that a compromise may be appropriate to the original request in my letter to Mayor McHale. Specifically, I believe the commission, the Duncan Park Commission, would approve the following compromise on our requests. Specifically, I believe that the commission would agree to split the invoice of about forty-two thousand dollars fifty-fifty. Council would waive half, and the commission would ask the Duncan Park Fund or the Community Foundation to pay the other half. I would also ask that the council waive additional fees for the balance of last fiscal year, which covers about a month. The invoice went through about May tenth, if I remember, and it just makes sense to waive the balance of that invoice. I'd also ask that council appropriate funds of five thousand dollars for this fiscal year. That would be about, that would be half of what we originally requested. And going forward, the commission would propose that we would submit a budget request to council each and every year as required by the ordinance. We have not done that in the past, but I believe it's an appropriate task for our commission to undertake. Any excess in our budget that would be required over the amount approved by council, whether it's five thousand for this fiscal year or as appropriated in future fiscal years, we would ask the Duncan Park Fund or the Grand Haven Area Community Foundation to help us with that project or with that funding. A big part of my rationale for asking for waiver of the invoice, and when I say I, I speak for the commission, is that I understand that a very substantial amount of the invoice includes snow plowing. And I think some commissioners would be just happy that the drive and the parking lot were not plowed. But I believe the city does require that drive to be plowed, certainly to the lift station. And as Councilman Scott pointed out last, at your last meeting, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to do a three-point turn there by the lift station right inside the park gate. It does make sense just to plow right on through to the parking lot, do a turnaround and come back, and not charge the park for that snow plowing. I live across the street from the park, and I know that there are a lot of slutters that go down, I think it was called Hot Dog, Hot Dog Hill last week. And I know that there are a lot of slutters that go down the hill into the parking lot. I know there's safety precautions taken with bales of hay to keep the slutters out of the parking lot. But it would just make sense for this council to make that, make that parking lot accessible to users of the park in the winter. I, I'm going to stick around for the council's deliberations, and I'd be happy to address questions later. But I know that it was tabled at your last meeting, and I know that in order to deliberate, you need someone to pull that off the table and to have a vote on that motion to pull it off the table. But I thought I'd get the proposed compromise in sooner rather than later, so that you can consider that in your future deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address council at this time? If not, we will move along to our consent agenda.
Do you want to continue the work session?
Continue the work session?
Oh, I'm sorry, going to leave the work session behind. Well, yes, I'm sorry, we'll continue with the work session and our deliberations on the community center remodel.
Yeah, so the only part of the project, I think, that is really, really crucial at this time is the stairwell to the west. It's one of the cheapest, so if we don't do anything, I think we really need to do something there. They're just in really failing condition. The retaining wall on the outside, on the front, shows signs of deterioration, of drainage issues. It's not going to fail tomorrow. So part of that and the conversion into the patio and then the entrance was to make a large enough project to be doable, and what the community center board was proposing as well. So I guess at this point, it's just whether or not the council has an appetite with the pricing that we have to move forward or not. We can, I do know that the community center board is open, or meets third Monday at five o'clock, so it'll be November eighteenth, if that's where you want to go. I believe the pricing should be, should be viable even after that, because it'd be a December then award by the council. We probably could talk to contractor and extending that. But, Evan, you know how long that, those pricing? Sixty days, we open them October twenty-third, so, so yeah, we would, we'd be able to, to award it first meeting in December.
So can the steps, I know the steps, you know, need work, and so there's some foundation issues, but, so those can still be done before winter? We got, is there enough time for that, or, I know it's weather dependent, but I was just kind of curious.
The, what we did with the contractor, originally the project was going to be...
You had to come up to the microphone so Eric can hear you on the radio.
Originally, the contractors, the, the construction schedule was going to begin after February in terms of the timeframe that we had available, the four, four weeks. Actually, the contractors were the ones that asked us if we could accelerate the project. So there still is enough, what they wanted to do is to get as much of the demolition and reconstruction, the concrete work, done before December. They felt that they had enough time. I think we were actually anticipating the construction to begin November fourteenth, and they were actually trying to get the stairs done within a two-week time period. So there still would be time to do that.
Well, with the, with the change in the schedule and taking it to the community center board, that wouldn't, wouldn't be all... If we were working it tonight, they were looking to do it, so, but otherwise, it doesn't look like there'd be enough time.
Right.
So would it make sense to separate this part of the job from the other and award a separate contract for the stairs? Would there be a, much of an upcharge in price if we did that, so we could get those stairs done? I mean, that's something we could probably do without sending back the community center board, whereas, I agree with what Josh had said earlier and what I think the sentiment of the council, that community center board ought to see this and come back with a recommendation. I think they need to prioritize what we would do and what we might not do, because I think that this is an awfully big price to swallow considering what we had budgeted. So, but clearly, we have a safety issue with this emergency exit stairway. And if we did separate that and award that as a job and hold the rest of it as a separate project, any idea what that would be in terms of increased cost? You'd have to mobilize.
Yep.
You might even have a different contractor, it's hard to say.
And I think that we can do the stairs in the spring. I mean, they're not going to crumble tomorrow, I mean, they're crumbling. They, they need immediate attention, when I say that, for the next, you know, three to nine months. Where the wall on the outside, you know, could last another few years, you know, we don't, I don't... It's starting to fall now, you can, you can see the degradation.
So you don't, you don't really see that urgency in doing the stairs?
Well, it is, yeah, like before the end of the fiscal year, for sure.
Okay.
But yeah, but not like, you need it before December first.
Not next month.
No.
Okay. Because I know there'd be a cost if you separated that into a separate job.
We'd have to negotiate that with, with one of the contractors.
Because I think the community center board should go back and look at it. Everyone never, I never felt that the enclosure of the foyer was the top priority job, whereas I think there was a business case to be made for the patio terrace work, taking that retaining wall, turning it into usable, rentable space. And the stairway was a project in itself for safety, and the fascia was building maintenance. I mean, all those things have different priorities and different needs. And so, and just looking at, on its face, I think we need to cut something somewhere. So, let's, let's, let the community center board make a recommendation as what the most sensible thing that they could live without might be.
Sure. Okay.
Well, anyways, I'll weigh in now.
Go ahead.
You're right, Bob, we had some reservations on a lot of those things when they first came to us, and we asked them a couple of times to go back to the, to the board and take a look at it. But after looking at the retaining wall outside, how that's deteriorating, the steps are deteriorating, and everything else that's going on around it, even in the foyer area where it's deteriorating there also, where it's getting down into the foundation itself. The water runs down inward into that foyer area, and it actually lays in there, and it's getting into the foundation, and it's eroding all that pretty bad. I noticed after the last few years, Dan's been trying to maintain that a little bit, but, you're saying that even after, if we did do the whole thing, and even after all that, the money, still the bonding part will still have $900,000 left?
That's correct. The-
And that's the bonding that the people voted for to do, to maintain it and everything on that order? So, I mean, if, if we have the money and the bond is there, we already can have it, I don't see no reason why. I mean, the people voted for us to maintain that building, and they voted for us to millage and do things, and we can update it and keep it, and we'll still have money left over for maintenance in the later years. I don't see no reason why not moving forward, I know, if it's already there. Maybe not this year, but we can, can we split that out into another budget year or something, or whatever, if you know, or whatever, however we can do that, because the money is there.
Yeah, we currently have the 651 in, in the fund.
Right.
From the millage. That was with, what you already collected to date.
Today.
So, there'd be $65,000 left, and then additional 400, I think it was like 415, 420,000 annually the next two years, the final two years.
The next two years, that'll go back in there for upkeep, maintenance, and anything else on that.
Yeah, so I think the millage was not for maintenance, Pat, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, but we will use it for the building itself.
Yep, exactly, yep. Renovations.
I've got a, I remember, I think it was Dan, it was telling us about, you know, the importance of closing in the front, the steps and all that, and that was, and a lot of that was to protect the building and to keep the steps from being icy, because it, being exposed to the elements. And this would, this would close that in and make it a very, a much better entrance and much better presentation to the inside of the community center. So, if we have the money to do that, I think that just doing the steps and ignoring closing in of the front is, is, is kind of missing, missing the purpose of what we're doing. And, and I think that that helps with the getting, keeping the water out of there and, and to leaking in and, and just safety and not having icy steps there. If the money is there to do it, I know it went a whole lot more expensive than what, than what we had planned on, but I think that that was a very good point about taking good care of the community center, so. I had more issues with those long tables that look like institutions.
They were round when we bid the project, so.
That's right, we read, sorry. That's, you know, I'd say, I'd agree with Mike on that. If the money is there, I think it would be enhance the building in order to do that. And enhance the maintenance of the building.
I was just gonna say, I was gonna say, at least it makes the building last a little longer, because right now, if we leave it as it is, you don't do those major things, it's just gonna deteriorate and get worse. And if we just do steps and stuff on that order, it's crazy. You might as well finish the project, the way we planned on it to start out with. Every bid we've gotten lately has been higher than normal anyways. I mean, it's, that's the norm, I think, now.
Just like the water.
Yes. Like water, it's the new norm, it's high, everything's high.
Prices will too, I don't know, I'm hoping.
If we have, if we have the money there and it's available for us to do, I just can't see us not moving forward on it.
And I, I agree with that the items that are on the list most likely do need to be done, all of them. My concern is just from a, out of respect to the community center board, that they have an opportunity to weigh in, considering this came in at almost double what we had budgeted. And if I were sitting on a committee and I knew that I had a fixed amount of money to plan on for the next year, and then it was gone, I'd at least, one, I have the opportunity to say, yeah, I'm 100% behind that. So, that would be my take on that. Thanks.
Is Shar still here?
Yep.
She, when is the next community center board?
November 18th.
Same day you meet.
Yeah.
But we could have this on the November 18th agenda, go to the community center board immediately before this meeting, get some feedback, and then bring it to this meeting for action. With that?
I'm okay with doing that, if that's, if that's acceptable with everybody else, but I think that's a good idea. I don't have a problem with that. And as far as moving forward, I would like to see what they have to say, but I'm for going forward with this too, so. I don't have a big issue with it. I think it's gonna be, make the building a lot more appealing and probably maybe helping increase the business over there too, so. Hopefully, we get more people using that facility after we, we make the improvements to it.
Sure. Okay. Sounds like I got some direction.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Now, onto the consent agenda.
This is to approve the special work session and regular council meeting minutes of October 21st, 2019. Approve the bills memo in the amount of $972,424.03. Approve the Neighborhood Housing Services Department to apply for and, if awarded, accept the fiscal year 19 HUD supplemental grant funds in the requested amount of $15,000, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents. Approve the on-bill finance project and special assessment at 929 Woodlawn in the amount of $8,315 for sewer lateral replacement, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents. Approve the water interconnect contract with the City of Norton Shores, City of Muskegon, Fruitport Charter Township, West Michigan Regional Water Authority, Ottawa County, Spring Lake Charter Township, Spring Lake Village, Grand Haven Charter Township, and the City of Ferrisburg, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents. Approve the termination of option to purchase real estate previously sold to Paramarquette Partners in 1996, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents. Approve a five-year agreement with Replank Dock Company to accept all leaves delivered by the city at an initial cost of $4,000 per year, with leaves to be composted with Grand River dredge material to be reused as topsoil or thick fill, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents. And approve an emergency repair to the city's 2004 Sutphen Aerial Platform in the amount of $28,612.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Duncan.
It moved in second. Comments or questions on any of these items on the consent agenda?
None here.
None? Did you have some?
Nope, nope, good, good.
If there are none, then we will vote.
Scott?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Minnetza?
Yes.
Bruger?
Yes.
McHaleb?
Yes. All right. New business item A.
This item is to direct the city manager to notify the State of Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy that the city intends to consider an ordinance to permit waivers of groundwater extraction zones for irrigation wells that meet drinking water standards, and to place such ordinance for introduction on the December 16th, 2019 city council agenda.
Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a support?
I think whenever the mayor puts something on the agenda, we ought to discuss it, so I will second it.
All right. So, I asked to have this put on the agenda, because I thought it was an injustice to, to have peoples, people that have wells on their property for irrigation, to have them be forced to shut down without allowing them to be tested to see what the water quality is. And so, I think we've got some, some test wells back, half a dozen or so. They're all drinking water quality. They're, they have no vinyl chloride in the detection samples. And so, then we found out that we have to give the state 30 days' notice before we are allowed to put something like this, permit waivers on the, on the agenda. So, my, my thought would be not to change, not to, to just add an amendment to our original ordinance that we passed concerning the, the closing of the wells, that if your well tested drink water, drinking water quality, that there would be an exemption. So, I know that Mark Verkamos is here. I'm gonna ask him if he, if he wants to come and say a few words regarding this, because I know that he was familiar with testing of the wells.
Mark Verkamos, I live at 1020 Marion, and just a side note, if it makes council feel any better, we bid a project to rehab the fascia of our meter station at an architect's estimate of $25,000, and the bids came in at $57,000. So, I don't want you to feel bad, we're going through the same thing with Good Times. Unfortunately, drive prices up, so we're feeling the pain as well. As you're aware, Eagle had submitted data to the city that showed levels of vinyl chloride above the safe drinking water standard in wells that were deeper than 26 and 1/2 feet. No testing data above 26 and 1/2 feet was submitted in the, in the 2018, 2019 test summary that was submitted, although it was done in '15, and it showed much lower values in '15 above the 26 and 1/2 feet. Council had asked Eagle and Dake if continued use of the wells would cause vinyl chloride within the plume to mix. It was clear from the affirmative, the affirmative, I can say this, the affirmative answer from Eagle and Dake that council's decision was based upon that it would affect the stirring of the plume. But they never provided any scientific data, and I still stand firm on that. It was anecdotal, there was nothing to support that position, it was strictly their opinion. It continues to be my belief that vinyl chloride levels above the 26 and 1/2 foot mark are at or below the safe drinking water standard, and that mixing was not occurring as claimed by EGL and Dake. Typical shallow well pump, as we've talked about before, generally cannot draw water deeper than 20 feet. On a good day, maybe 25. And shallow and intermediate well tests provided by Eagle in '15 could be interpreted to mean that wells above the 20 feet would test below the safe drinking water standards. As presented at previous meetings, six property owners within the Ottawa Steel Plume were interested in further testing to determine if Eagle and Dake assertion was true, meaning that it did stir the plume. Of the six wells tested, again, all tested wells showed below the safe drinking water standard, and five of the six cases, they actually showed non-detect, means it didn't even show up in the sample itself. In other words, it was, it was below the testing standard. I also provided council a map that showed those, they were more or less of a representative sample through, throughout the Ottawa Steel Plume. I had previously provided council with scientific data that proves that mixing within the Aquafur simply does not occur. As noted in a previous meeting, well use creates a cone of depression around the well screen, and the movement of the water to recharge this cone is what's called laminar, or to a high degree, parallel. Again, the editors of the Encyclopedia Britannica describe laminar flow in part as a type of fluid or gas flow in which the fluid traverses smoothly in a regular path, in contrast to turbulent flow. In other words, it's not turbulent, in which the fluid undergoes irregular fluctuations in mixing. In laminar flow, the velocity, pressure, and other flow properties at each point of the fluid remain constant. Laminar flow over a horizontal surface may be thought of as consisting of thin layers or laminate, all parallel to one another. In other words, it doesn't draw it from below, it draws it parallel. The fluid in contrast with the horizontal, in contact with a horizontal surface is stationary, but all the other layers slide over each other, and it's likened to like a deck of cards. If you take a new deck of cards out, how they slide off each other, they're, they slide parallel to one another. They don't, they don't pull from the bottom. This information previously provided to council is further substantiated by the U.S. Geological Survey in their article, "Stream Flow: Depletion by Wells, Understanding and Managing the Effects of Groundwater Pumping on Streams", by what is groundwater published by the Cooperative Extension Service of Michigan State, and finally, by J.H. Lear in the article, "An Empirical Model Study of Cones of Depression Produced by Pumping Wells". I don't want to get into the boring details of all of this. All of this was provided to council in previous meetings. But the long and the short of it is, there is scientific data that shows what EGL stated and, and was supported by Dake is not true. It does not pull from down below. So, given those samples that were drawn by the residents, the upper part of the, the, in this case, the Ottawa Steel Plume does not show vinyl chloride levels above the safe drinking water standards. As we know, residents sprinkle with well water to make their homes and yards look neat, well-kept, and to keep our community be more appealing, or help our community be more appealing. Further, they can reduce their costs by using well water rather than the municipal water. Council's decision to restrict groundwater use in the Ottawa Steel and Dake Plume has created an undue hardship on many of the residents, many of whom are on fixed incomes. Moreover, the cost to connect their sprinkling system to municipal water in many cases is extremely expensive due to the location of the wells. Oftentimes, in back of garages, at the back of the property. Typically, the water service goes in the front of the house. It's a long way to get it from the front to the back. And then finally, the recent increase in water rates further exacerbates the difficulties these residents are gonna be faced with trying to, to afford the municipal water to keep their property values up and keeping their properties looking nice. So, on behalf of the residents, I appreciate the council's willing to take a look at this again. I, again, respectfully request that the council reevaluate the decision and consider providing a relief to the residents who can test and prove that their well water tests are below the safe drinking water standards. Thank you for at least having a discussion on this tonight.
All right, thank you. I see this, you know, as we have this table of vinyl chloride detect in, in several wells, but it's at a, they're at from 26 to 50-some feet. And over the, for, in a, in a three, in a three-year period, the numbers, the amounts of detection went down dramatically. So, the wells, all the wells that were tested showed either, so drinking water quality or zero detect. To then destroy that well, to me, is just, is just, it reminds me a lot of the lead and, and copper rule that the state is imposing on the city of Grand Haven. That even though that our water doesn't detect any lead or at very, at well within safety levels, and yet we have to, you know, we're mandated to go and spend precious dollars that we'd like to spend on real problems and fixing a problem that does not exist. This is the same thing, that we're, that what the state is doing to us in the lead and copper rule is the very same thing that we're proposing to do with people that are irrigating with this water that, that tests at drinking water quality. And I think this is highly unfair, and it's just, it's just my nature, just balks at destroying something that is perfectly good, just because of what may happen, and it's not happening. So, you're, again, you're fixing a problem that does not exist. And I don't think there's any difference between what we're doing to people that have wells and are willing to test them at their cost on an annual basis, as opposed to what the state of Michigan is doing to the city of Grand Haven and all cities in Michigan on the lead and copper rule. That if your water tests drinking water quality, why should you destroy your property? You put the well in, you put the pump in, you're maintaining it. It's your property. Your water is perfectly safe, yet we're mandating that these wells should be destroyed. And I think that that's wrong. And that's why I asked to have this reintroduced, to as an amendment to the original resolution that we passed, that say that all these had to be destroyed. I just think it's wrong. I think we need to amend it, that if the water is tested on an annual basis at the well owner's cost, and if it tests positive, if it tests good qual- quality, then they should be able to use that water to sprinkle their grass. So I don't know if anybody else wants to weigh in on that, but that's my position, and that's why I asked to have it put back on the agenda.
And I agree, if the wells are testing okay, and they're drinking water safe, I see no reason to close the well. As long as they're willing to test that well once a year, I don't have a problem with them keeping that well, as long as they agree to doing that, once a year it should be tested. But to close people's well, when it's drinking water safe, is, to me, is crazy.
So if anybody else wants to weigh in on that?
I'll comment. I think we talked about a lot of these pros and cons the last time we debated it. Whenever new information comes to light, I think it's worth a visit, the new information being that this water is actually drinkable. However, we've got over four thousand households in the city of Grand Haven, and this affects, well, six that were tested. So we're talking a very small, small portion of the population, and we have a responsibility to protect the entire population from hazards, in this case volatile chemicals, VC chemicals in the water and in the plume. So I'm not in favor of lifting this or amending it. What I would be open to is, we're moving on to winter, wells for irrigation aren't gonna be used. I'd be in favor of offering a six-month postponement of forced closure of these wells, pending the ability of these individuals to, or excuse me, with the idea that these individuals can obtain a statement from the DEQ or the Eagle, that shallow wells, twenty-six feet or less, as presented tonight, will have absolutely no effect on the volatile chemicals in the plume. Then I'd be willing to entertain a motion to lift it, you know, provided that they're tested, as the mayor has spoken annually. But without that statement from the DEQ saying that this would have no negative adverse effect on the rest of the plume, I'm not comfortable lifting it. I think that one other option, I don't think, I know one other option for these affected individuals and those who have a well and would like to pull water up from the ground, a decision by council can be overturned at the ballot box. You can obtain, I believe it's fifteen percent of the registered voters, to sign a document saying that you'd like this to be on a ballot, for the entire citizenry to vote on it, that's another way to overturn it. Six months' time would give you time to do that. And by the time six months is up, I believe it'd be April, that'd be about the time we'd start irrigating again and using our groundwater, probably more into May and June. So I'd see no negative downside to a six-month postponement. But as far as permanent lifting, I would not be in favor of that. Thanks.
Okay. It's very possible that the vinyl chloride contamination would never show up at any given well, and the stirring mixing of the aquifer, which seems to be being questioned, with whatever the level of debate is on that. I know when we've de-watered areas for construction work, which may be deeper wells, but when you de-water, you move groundwater around, we've seen that, we've measured it, we know that you can disturb an underground aquifer by pumping water out of it. And exactly how it mixes or all that, I won't profess to be an expert on that, but I know it can happen that you do move groundwater around. Whether or not it ever shows up on any one person's well, they may have clean water from here till the end of time, it may turn out to be perfectly drinkable, but the act of pumping water out of that aquifer may still affect that aquifer. The same water in this aquifer is flowing north from these sites where the contamination originated, flowing north along Beacon Boulevard to this very neighborhood that we were talking about earlier tonight, where we have this groundwater entering people's basements and yards, because the water level is so high. If we don't see the vinyl chloride at the point where the well is, pulling water out, we may see it somewhere else, it may show up in a place where it's just being brought to the surface in an uncontrolled manner. So I think that in abundance of caution, public safety, or public policy would be health, safety, and welfare of the general public, that we don't take that chance on having this water, this contaminated water, show up anywhere else, move to someone else's property, possibly even move to where it doesn't exist today. The best thing you can do, anytime you have a pollution situation, which is currently not exposing anyone, is to leave it alone. And so if we can leave it alone, leave it in place, let it naturally degrade, naturally flow away, which is what it's been doing for the past four decades, five decades, then that's your best situation as far as the general public exposure. Comparing this to the lead and copper rule isn't comparable at all. In fact, what I just said applies to lead and copper rule, the best thing we can do is not disturb the lead, because it's passivated with calcium carbonate, which is naturally occurring with our, with the water we pump through our system, doesn't even require any special treatment. So the best thing we can do there would be to leave it alone, just as leaving the groundwater plume alone is the best thing we can do there. So I think that both of these things, this is the right answer, would be try not to disturb the aquifer, try not to disturb our lead lines, because they are properly treated. All this stuff ties together. I mean, I think that's the right way to handle it. We're not debating lead and copper rule tonight, that was just brought up as one of those things that we have to deal with, and it sounds a lot like it. But I think the actual effect is just the opposite of what was suggested. So no, I'm not in favor of changing what we put in place, I think that this has been a difficult decision, it's going to impact a number of people, but I think the potential for impacting even more people in their homes does exist, and I'm not willing to take that chance, and I'm not willing to vote for this.
I didn't vote for it, I voted for to close the wells, and my family has a well, and we're happy to see it go, to be honest with you. The dangers of anything else around is not worth the risk to take. I'm not in favor of this at all, to be honest with you.
Well, Pat, when are they gonna start closing the wells, do we know? Do we have a date?
They are on hold right now with this proposal, but they're looking to continue this month, ideally, they just received probably ninety-eight percent of the excess consent forms, so that's where they were at in that process. So they should be looking to start that work immediately.
If we vote this down, they're gonna start it immediately. Okay. And Josh, your amendment would be to, for a stand's closing those wells for six months? Is that what you think?
I don't know if, if that's gonna be an amendment, it's almost as if it's a whole new proposal, but that would be the general concept, to give them six months to obtain a statement from the DEQ saying that it'll have no impact on the VC and the ground. And then I'd be willing to consider it, I'm not saying I would vote for it, but I think that would at least be an opportunity for them to present their case to the DEQ, excuse me, Eagle now. And again, we're not-
That's kind of like a snowball's chance in hell of deciding, this is something that we should do, not leave it to Eagle, who's going on a rampage trying to close everything down. Yes, Pat, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
Wow, maybe I have, never mind.
That's a well said, though.
Well, the ordinance, just a clarification, in the ordinance, there's an exception, that if the DEQ or if Eagle determines that the use of the well is not influenced, or potentially influenced by contaminated groundwater, and further determines that the use of that well will remain permanently unaffected by the future migration of contaminated groundwater, and proof of those determinations is delivered to the city, the city manager may execute a waiver allowing the use of the well. So that's already in the ordinance, that if DEQ, so the individual property owners could go to Eagle at this point with their evidence presented, and if DEQ sends me an email, or says we've gotten this documentation, this evidence, this research, whatever it may be, I could issue a waiver for that particular well, that's already in the ordinance.
Wow, how convenient.
But as the mayor stated, I believe since the DEQ just went through this process of trying to get to where they're at right now, I'd be surprised if they went that way, but the owners do have a means of redress in the ordinance already. And then the end of the ordinance, sorry?
I was just gonna say, the Eagle has actually provided one of those waivers in one of the Dake zones. So they're open and willing, they've shrunk these plumes to the smallest they feel comfortable with, but they have been willing to pursue that if there's proof and they feel comfortable with it.
Well, that six-month stay might-
Well, do we even need to consider that, if the individual person can go to the-
I don't think we do.
They just need to go straight to Eagle and plead their case.
Correct.
No need for it, then, it's already there.
Okay. If we vote for this?
Doesn't matter, we don't have to do this.
No, you have to do it, then.
Right, they can go there themselves.
Now, if this, the ordinance provides that we have to give Eagle thirty-day notice if you're going to amend the ordinance. So tonight's motion is to give them that notification, so that we can place it on the agenda on December sixteenth. And what it is, would be an ordinance to permit waivers if it passes drinking water standards, and not have Eagle involved, that would be the city doing that directly.
Clear as drinking water, Pat.
Well, I was, and I don't know if I'm kind of paraphrasing, Jerry had discussed this with me, and I tried my best to summarize it, that that was the intent of the amendment to the ordinance, that it would allow, well, groundwater extraction for wells that meet drinking water standards. We could implement that in our ordinance, and Eagle is very aware of that proposed amendment, and-
And they're gonna take responsibility for anything further on? That we don't have to take responsibility of the vinyl chloride yet? What happens is, if we say okay, and all of a sudden vinyl chloride comes appearing again, is it, are we saying okay, or are we just waiting for Eagle to say okay, then they take responsibility of it?
Well, it sounds like Eagle would do it on a case-by-case basis.
Right, if they okay it, well then it would be theirs, not us.
That wouldn't require our action, that's already here.
Yeah. We've already got that in ordinance, we've already written?
Based on the information, I'll be voting no on this, because there's already a mechanism in place with Eagle's approval.
And what Eagle would do is send that determination to me, and I would say, okay, you have a waiver, because Eagle said that you've proven to them that there's no influence, and that it's not going to cause any influence.
And we already voted on that.
That's already, well, yeah, that's-
That's already in place.
Yeah.
We did that a while ago.
The citizens already have an opportunity to go forward and move forward with it if they want to with Eagle.
Yeah, you did that in two thousand and one.
This ordinance has been in place a long time.
Yeah, you just added these two zones to the existing framework.
Okay.
There's already a mechanism for it to use. Why are we even doing this?
All right, I think we're ready to vote on this.
Fritz?
No.
Minnetza?
No.
Bruker?
Nope.
Scott?
Yes.
Caleb?
Yes. All right, next item.
Next item is to approve the resubmission of a two thousand and nineteen Community Development Block Grant application for Project River Watch in the amount of one million, six hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars, with a ten percent local match of one hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety cents. The administration recommends approval.
Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
In support.
In support. So, Pat, are you doing this? Tony's doing this?
Ashley is doing this.
Ashley's doing this, all right.
All right, Ashley Latch, Assistant to the City Manager. So, long story short, we have another case of bids coming in higher than anticipated. So with Project River Watch, you'll see, or you may remember, our original project total anticipated was around one point seven million. Well, the bids came in around two point four, so that put us approximately seven hundred thousand over our original ask amount. So we worked with Aben Marsh to come up with a number of revised scopes and different alternatives and pairings of scope items to present to the MEDC, to see if we could get back down to that original ask amount of one point seven for a total project cost. And in an attempt to revise that scope to meet the original grant ask amount, we had a number of combinations, but essentially the MEDC came back to us and said, in order to remain compliant with HUD requirements, we would have to, we would be forced to remove the burial of the overhead utility lines first. So in any case, we have that revised proposal showing that. About everything else, scope item-wise, is as bid at one point five million, engineering costs we've already encountered at a hundred and twenty thousand, putting us at a revised project total of one point six. And that's with everything except for the burial of the overhead power lines. So our new ask would be for one point four million from CDBG monies, and local match of a hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars. The unintended consequence of having to remove the burial of the power lines is that that is where our match was being derived from, so there was originally no city funds being invested in this project. So now we would be obligated to commit to that a hundred and sixty-three thousand, ten percent match.
So do you know where that's coming from?
That would have to be coming from Public Improvement Fund carryover, fund balance. So it would have to be a budget appropriation by City Council to cover that.
Okay, and then something else doesn't get done?
That money's not in your fund balance any longer, correct.
Anyway, I think this is still a good project, and I think we can handle the burial of the power lines in a different manner, but this still would clear that area along One South Harbor, and will greatly improve our view of the river, and do some much-needed cleanup work out there. You know, every time I think we're done, something new comes along to make things even better. So I am much in favor of doing this, and that's a nice tidy amount of money to get from the state, and I think this is a good thing to move forward on. And I still think we can get those power lines buried, and just work with the BLP on it.
Pat, what's our, on the CDBG match, not match, yeah, ten times almost, is there any particular reason why we qualify for that now, that we might not qualify for it in the future, or that the grant money may be gone, or, you know, what's the urgency on that side of the equation?
Well, this was when we first, I think you're all pretty familiar with how this came to pass and how we got to be where we're at. We were considered low-to-moderate income community, because we did a survey in two thousand and nine to establish that. That ten-year allowance, because of that survey, ran out on us, and they've subsequently reclassified us as not low-to-mod. We're now forty-eight point seven percent low-to-mod, so we're not a majority low-to-mod, so we're no longer a low-to-mod community, and will not be eligible to participate for these funds going forward. So this would be our last chance, and our eligibility runs out in December. So if we don't hit the November strategic fund meeting, then we just won't be able to apply for these funds in the future.
Given that information, given as the mayor pointed out, it's a great project, it improves ADA accessibility to the waterfront, improves view sheds, really does a complete makeover on that area for a relatively small local match. I'm very much in favor of this, just as it is, and we do need to bury the power lines yet, we will have to look at other ways to do that, but I'd hate to turn down one and a half million dollars. So, yeah.
I agree, Josh. As I came forward with it, those ramps and stuff down are not ADA compliant, they're very, very intrusive. Have you ever watched anybody go down- Have you ever watched anybody go down in a wheelchair in there? It's very disturbing. It's not very, it's not good. Half those ramps are, you can't use, you can't go up them. If you're in a wheelchair, you have a very difficult time just going up them. They're not in the right angles and anything is not good. For the small amount of 160, 160, yeah, 163,000, I figure it's a, it's a pretty cheap fix for a whole waterfront area, making it so it's more ADA compliant. We're, when we built it, didn't have to worry about so much about that stuff. Now, as the years go by, we have to be more inclusive and that's what I like to see down there, make it more inclusive so people can actually really enjoy using the waterfront more besides normal people. We have to have people that can go down there in wheelchairs and anything else, if are handicapped, make it accessible. So, you're right, for 1.5 million dollars, I'll take it, I'm ready to move forward with it.
I am too, Mike, I think it's a good, it's a good amount of money, that's for sure. I hate to turn that down to, we put up 163,000, we get a million and a half, so it's just kind of a no-brainer to me.
Well, I wouldn't walk away from a million and a half. I guess whether you think 163,000 is small change or not, it's kind of relative. It comes from some...
You're talking about 1.5 million.
It comes from somewhere, but the 1.5 million is pretty hard to walk away from, so.
Only 10%.
All right, I'm ready to vote.
Minnetza?
Yes.
Bruger?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
McHaleb?
Yes. Next item.
Next item is to purchase the property at 18 North Ferry Street for 127,500 to encourage redevelopment investment in the Washington Square neighborhood. Direct staff to cause improvements to be made to the property to prepare it for renting during the interim period and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents. The administration recommends approval.
Need a motion?
So moved.
In support.
Been moved and seconded. Pat, do you want to tell us about this house?
I will. The City Council set, as one of its goals, Washington Square redevelopment and not a lot of detail. And so, as time has gone along here, Jennifer and the Community Development Department have done quite a bit in Columbus. And the thought was that if this property were publicly owned and there were a future redevelopment project in that neighborhood, public ownership of that lot would make the property assembly easier if you own that. So, we looked at it, talked to City Council about it in a closed session because we were negotiating offering prices and we were able to discuss that. And we're able to finalize or settle on this 127,500 offer conditioned on City Council approval, among other things. So, as we've been doing our due diligence, looking at the financial, you know, it would not be wise to just buy it and leave it sit and let it sit empty and deteriorate and become a problem for the neighborhood. So, we'd want to do something with it and the thought was we would, could rent it as a single-family residence during the period, which we wait for other opportunities to come along and present themselves as you look to redevelop the Washington Square area. To rent it, we have to bring it up to certain standards. We want to make sure it passes our own rental registration rules. So, we did have our inspectors go through it and Jennifer has been very busy and Rhonda and our public safety inspectors, as well as our building inspector and others. We've had asbestos checked and lead paint and had the sewer televised. Derek Scroos went out and televised the sewer to get a look at that and determine the age of the water connection, to see if it's a lead water service, if that has to be connected. So, quite a bit of due diligence has gone on and we've come up with a number just under 40,000 to bring it to a standard that we would feel comfortable it being habitable under our own rental rules. So, you know, that puts the price up considerably higher than I think what we were thinking about when we first met and discussed this. The revenue side of this, looking at getting a family in there at 60% of the area meeting income, which would be a qualified family and a home of that size, we could charge just over 1,400 a month. And that would include utilities. And after we take out all expenses, we're fairly confident we could net a little better than 10,000 a year. So, I believe that would cover our holding costs, you know, while we're sitting on it. We wouldn't be losing money, we would still own the property, so the value would still be there. So, I still think it's a decent risk. The difference between you and a developer, if you were looking at it as a capitalist developer, you might not think this was a very good prospect, but the city's motivation is to set the stage for some future redevelopment. So, there's some value there, whereas a arms-length developer, looking at the profit-loss and maybe a little skinny 10,000 a year not being enough to motivate you, well, you've got the additional motivation, is the whole reason we even looked at it was because there was a desire to redevelop the neighborhood, which as a developer, you wouldn't have that motivation unless you were very altruistic. So, that's where we sit with a recommendation to move forward. There is one more element that I want to make you aware of that wasn't in the memo is that I believe that if we do rent it at less than market value at a subsidized rate, we may not have to pay taxes on it. Because it's a city-owned property that is being rented at a less-than-market rate, it's part of our mission and it could be considered a public purpose and therefore not taxed because all of the Salvation Army homes, the Love Inc. homes that are consistent with their mission, they don't pay property tax on those as long as they're fulfilling their mission. So, I, there may be that argument, I've not had that discussion with the city accessory yet, but that'd be about a 3,000 swing that would really just add to your, lessen your risk by that much if we don't have to pay that property tax. So, that's the full report. I think we've really done a, the staff has done a very good job of nailing down every detail they can to present a very clear, complete picture to you as you consider whether or not you want to acquire this property.
Well, when this was first presented to us, I thought it was kind of a good idea. It was a house that, you know, in an area that we were interested in, but that was without finding out how much it was going to cost to fix it up to be rental quality for the city of Grand Haven. So, now I'm looking at it as we're taking a house that couldn't be bought for 100 and a quarter by anybody and could be fixed up by themselves or someone else. And we're going to turn it into, we're going to spend a third of the value of what we're paying for the house in order to fix it up and in order to rent it out for a purpose into the future that we don't know. It's not contingent to properties that were, like parking, for parking. So, it's not, so we'd have to purchase other properties if we wanted to do that. And as soon as we've got one, I think the next ones are going to go up in value. So, even though I was in favor of this in the beginning, when I see what it costs to get into it, and it could be, to me, it'd be better owned by a private individual who would like, you know, when we moved into our house, we fixed it up little by little as we had, as we could afford it. But I'm not sure that it's the best thing for the city to be investing in property and take it off the, take another piece of property that would be affordable for somebody to buy and make it, and take that away from a private individual. So, I am no longer in favor of doing this. So, welcoming remarks from others.
I think, I think the only reason we ever looked at this was because it was in the Washington Square area. We're looking for opportunities to enhance that area and this is the first thing that's come along that, since we've been looking at it, that we could obtain, hold, and if an opportunity came up to combine it with other properties or turn it into something for a part of that commercial district, that it might help. It looks to me like we can get into it and fix it up and rent it and be minimal loss or no loss to the city. And if we decide this isn't working, we put it back on the market and sell it. So, I don't see any reason why we would pass up the opportunity to at least hold it for potential use as part of that district. It's been on our goals for some time to help the Washington Square area be more viable. Biggest single problem they've had all along is no public parking, no parking at all for some of the structures there. And so, it's true, we would have to combine this with other properties to make it usable. You wouldn't get much of a parking lot if you cleaned this off and just made it into a one-city lot, parking lot. But if we don't do anything, then this district will not have those opportunities, it won't have the opportunity, for example, the Crescent Theater has absolutely zero parking available and they've had to pass up on a number of opportunities. Whether this becomes part of the parking solution or eventually gets sold back as a house, we would still have that option, but I think that we ought to at least act to reserve this property and hold on to it so that we could do something with it. So, I'm still in favor of doing this. I don't see this as a moneymaker for the city or a money loser, I just see it as an opportunity we ought to take because it's there.
You guys are quiet down there on that end, so I'll go for it. Initially, I was hesitant to move forward on a purchase like this. And when we negotiated the price down a bit, it seemed a little bit more palatable with the concept of getting somebody in there at below the market rate for rent, provide a service. I had to tap the brakes and then slam on the brakes when we had 170,000 in an investment and put my private investor hat on and just say, I wouldn't invest in this as a private investor and so I can't spend public funds that way either. And great juxtaposition here, we just leveraged 163,000 for 1.5 million. Here, we're spending 170,000 after it's all said and done for 10,000 a year in return. And down the road, we might, might recover our initial investment of 170,000 or we might not. So, there's an opportunity cost, it ties up a significant amount of funds that are at our disposal and we're moving into a time when we don't have as many liquid funds available, liquid cash available. So, I am, as we've all said, everyone here, committed to investing in the Washington Square neighborhood and seeing some development there, but given the amount of money this ties up, the reduced return on the investment, the fact that it's not contiguous and not owning this parcel, excuse me, how would I say that? If I were a developer, this would be the least of my concerns as far as the parcels go in that area. It's the furthest one away, it'd be the last one that I'd need to acquire and I might not even need to acquire it to do something in that neighborhood. So, with all that said, I'm not in favor of it.
I agree, Josh, I'm not in favor of it either. I think the city is never a good landlord and we've had a bad experience with Grand Land and we've already seen how that worked out. So, I'm not willing to jump, I'm not, I don't want to jump into buying a house for future development, I'm just, and maybe, there's some other houses on Washington Street itself that may appeal more than that one, but that's, that location don't appeal to me for one thing and the other thing is the price, oh, they jumped up to 170,000 and, and I just don't, I don't think it's a good idea.
Well, it is our goal statement that we do want to help, but after finding out what all the costs are to maintain this and get it up to standards has brought us up to a point where it's a little bit more than what we anticipated when we first started out. It was a good idea, I have to agree with Jerry, that we start out, was a good idea someplace for us to start out at because we need parking there, we need other kinds of businesses. As Bob was saying, Crescent Theater's had many people that wanted to come in there, but there is no parking, there is nothing there for them. There's an opportunity for a couple of things, come in there, I've had some people approach me and talk about wanting to put things in there, but there's just absolutely, their trouble is trying to get parking there for them. If they want to put a business, even a retail business, where do you park? There's nothing there for them. This would have been a great start, even though it's not the best location, as Bob said, but after we get done putting our total investment in it, we just, we're lucky if we break even, thinking maybe if we sell it in the future, we might end up with it. But I'm kind of like in between the two of you guys, whether yes or no on it, but the simple fact is, yes, we do need, we do need the property, we need, we need parking there, we need a lot of things in that area to help spur more business there, but that's a lot of money right now. I see us bleeding at the seams with a lot of other things. We had a lot of other projects that came in that were way over budget and we have to be a little more frugal with our money. I can't think we're going to say that too much, but everything has been more than we anticipated this past year. And every time we turn around, we get a bid in and it's always way a lot higher than what we anticipated and what we budgeted. So, we said yes to a lot of things so far, even though I think it's a good idea for us to have this piece of property and it's probably a good move for us to do it, but I'm going to have to say no, of course, the simple fact is I don't think the money part is what is the best part for us. We don't need to be spending as much as we have been. Every time, like I said, as we turn around, we're spending 100,000 here, 200,000 here, 600,000 there, pretty soon, we're depleting everything we had and we'd need some of that for later on for some of the major projects that we have. If the building itself was a little bit closer and to the proximity of all the backing up to some of the parking lots that are there or whatever, it might make a little more sense to add to us and then you could have it there. I'm going to probably go with voting no on this for now, only because of the cost to get it up in standards to go forward. I think that's what's really holding me off, otherwise the price itself, I think, is a pretty good deal and for us to get for future. But I think the future, looking at it right now, is money-wise. I mean, I'm looking at dollars what we have and I don't see us wanting to spend that right now. I think we need to hang on to it for other reasons.
Okay, any other comments and we're ready to vote.
Bruger?
No.
Scott?
No.
Fritz?
No.
Minnetza?
Yes.
McHaleb?
No. And next item.
Next item is to approve a 2020 grant application to the Michigan Lighthouse Assistance Program in the amount of 60,000 with a local match of 30,000 to be reimbursed by the Grand Haven Lighthouse Conservancy. The administration recommends approval.
Need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Support?
Been moved and seconded. Is there a lighthouse person here? Otherwise...
Pat.
Yeah, I serve on that steerboard. They're looking at doing some concrete work around the lighthouse, they're very, very diligent in trying to leverage all of the grant funds they can find and they're raising money and they're ready to kick off another push in 2020, the Winterfest, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, it's going to be on WAWL, you heard it here first, listeners. The Winterfest Rotary fundraising this year is going to be for the next phase of lighthouse renovation. So, we expect it to be a big deal in 2020 and they're kind of looking ahead and anticipating and Ashley's been working very carefully with Aben Marsh and Joel Regovich and the Lighthouse Assistance Program to put together a package that should, the maximum grant is 60,000, so this is, and one-third match is required. So, 60,000 from the grant and 30,000 from the Lighthouse Conservancy is the maximum leveraging and they're going to get as much concrete work done as they can for 90,000. It was priced very high last time around when we tried to get some quotes for this because the pier itself was under construction and access was a real difficult issue. So, now we think we can get it lower, we think we can get an awful lot of that concrete around the entrance light where you've got some significant deterioration, we can get that solved. Probably a 2021 project at this point, so, but the city has to be the recipient, but it'll all be reimbursed by Lighthouse Conservancy funding.
Maybe by that time, the water levels will be down or it won't be underwater out there. Although next year, it'll probably be, it'll be totally underwater because it's Although next year, it'll probably be, it'll be totally underwater because it's going to be a foot higher than it is issue.
Right.
Well.
I used to dream too. The water ain't going to go down for a while.
Well, by the time they raise the money, honestly, and it's a couple of years from now, maybe it'll be on a downward swing. But I...
I don't think it'll take them long to come up with 30 grand.
No.
That's one of the easiest things we've seen.
Yes.
Yep. No, I think this is a good, I like, I like the plans of the Lighthouse Conservancy, the things that they're planning for the lighthouses. They've done a lot, raised a lot of money, they've done a lot of work. And I think that continuing to do this would be something that we would be proud of, so, as a city.
Ready?
All right, any other comments? Oh, just nodding of heads, okay, we're ready to go.
Scott?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Manetta?
Yes.
Bruger?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
And our last item.
Last item is under unfinished business. And this is to waive payment of an invoice dated June 6, 2019 in the amount of $41,994.72 for services related to care and maintenance of Duncan Park between July 1, 2015, and May 31, 2019, and to fund the care and maintenance of Duncan Park as determined by the Duncan Park Commission in an amount not to exceed $10,000 for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020.
All right, so we're going to, I may ask to put this, even though Mr. Cotner has already spoken to this issue, but I'm going to ask to be put on the agenda the way it is. And then we could, if council wishes, we can make some changes in accordance with what was offered. So if there is a motion for this.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support it.
Been moved and seconded, okay. So moving forward, there was the offer to split the invoice and ask council to approve $5,000 a year toward the maintenance of Duncan Park, which is part of the, part of the trust, that the city should help maintain the park, and to take snow plowing off the bill. So am I summarizing that correctly?
Perfectly, Mayor McHale. And I'd be happy to address any questions you or council may have, or go into the compromise further. But I sensed some, some pushback when I was last here, two weeks ago, that that was perhaps a pretty bitter pill to swallow. So I thought, you know, how can we make lemonade out of these lemons? And I thought, you know, if we meet halfway, I think I can sell that to the commission. And I believe that that would appropriately disengage, if you will, the snow plowing that I believe is included in the $42,000 invoice.
All right.
Yes, Pat.
Just a point of clarification, the snow plowing was $3,000 to $5,000 of that total $42,000 is the estimation of what snow plowing cost during the four-year period. So if there was an inclination to not charge for snow plowing, that amount would be $3,000 to $5,000.
Sorry.
Was that?
You lost me.
I guess I'm lost, is that with a per-year charge?
No, that was throughout the entire course of the four years. The expense that would have been attributed to snow plowing of that $42,000 would be $3,000 to $5,000 for the whole period.
Right. Because I thought, I thought it was higher than that, but...
I just got some information for you. I made a phone call to John Singer Ling, because he's on the foundation, signed for it. And he also was a commission member at the time with Glenn Eaton. Denny, you are actually correct, Glenn would always get things done. And John was telling me, he says, when he was on there, he always wanted to figure out how to get things done. He says, well, Glenn says, "Not a problem." He says, "I'll figure it out." He says, but, he says, what the commissions are, back then, he says, he didn't want the city involved at all, period, with it. And that's why they, one of the reasons why they set up the fund and to help for the maintenance and operation of it. He says, "But the commissioners would clean the park, the trails." That's what Glenn and him would do. They'd go out there and they would clean it. And when they couldn't do it, they would ask the Boy Scouts to help out and come in. Or they would ask other people to come in and give them a hand. If they needed financial help, they would get ahold of Paul Johnson. And Paul was in charge of the Loudit Foundation at the time. He says, "Not a problem, I can, I'll get the money for you." If they needed $5,000, $7,000, whatever it was. But after a while, Paul figured it out that they kept coming, needing more money and more money. So they set up the trust fund that they had, well, the fund, the Duncan Park Fund. And as you notice in here, the reason what it's made up for is people can make donations to it to help maintain, it's called, provide funds for maintenance and operation of the park. It wasn't for the city to give money and become a budget of it, because then they didn't want the city to have, give money to it, for the simple fact is, once we start giving money to them, then we hadn't dictate to them how, how that money gets spent and where we want to use it. And they did not want the city to be part of it. It was very interesting to talk with Mr. Singer Ling and see what he had to say about the whole situation. He said, "I wish I was here in Grand Haven and not in Florida so I could stand in front of you and tell you exactly all of it." But those were, what he was telling me about it was, he says, he did not think it was proper for the city to have any funds at all into, into the park. Because that's what the fund was supposed to be set up for in the community foundation. It's for the maintenance and operation of the park itself, not the city to have it underneath their coffers. If anybody wants to, you can, I got John's number if you want to call him sometime. But this is what he was reiterated to me. I had a nice 45-minute talk on the phone with him. And he was very, very adamant about not having the city involved. He says, "That was not the whole intention." He says, "The thing of it was, is they wanted the money to go into a fund so they didn't have to keep coming back to the Loudit Foundation and asking them for money to help maintain the park and operations of it."
So, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I had some questions. So Pat, of the $42,000, over 10 years?
Over, over four years.
Four years. Got to do my math wrong. You're saying around $3,500 of that?
Between $3,000 and $5,000.
So let's say $4,000.
$4,000.
Okay. So that leaves us $38,000. And forgive me, I don't have in this packet the itemized list of what that other $8,000, $9,000 a year was for. But what was it for?
It's pages of, you know, hourly wages and equipment that was used for whatever they would do when they would drive in to go empty garbage, or pick up some brush, or leaves, or cut grass, or whatever they were doing in there, whatever they were called on to do. They would just report their hours, they just record them in their timesheets. And then we just kept track of it throughout the period, running a tab throughout that period.
So, maintenance.
Yeah, just the operation and maintenance, what they'd usually do.
All right, thanks.
I'm, I'm willing to, seeing that if you wanted to. I'm not willing to waive a whole lot of things. But the thing is, I would be willing to waive the snow plowing part on it. Take that off in there and not add any more budgetary items to them. We can take care of the snow plowing, and we have to go in there anyways, like we've always have done before. It's not where it has not done before. But I'm not in favor of giving them money out of the budget. They have their own fund, and that's what it's provided for. Stated right there at the Duncan Park Fund in 4.01. That's what the purpose of that fund is for, operations and maintenance. It's not coming from the city. So I'm willing to move forward with waiving the snow plowing part, but not anything else on it.
So going back to original deeds, original ordinances and such, and seeing where, how we got into this, and what the, what should have been. We were, we were, we talked last time about the original deed and trust. And the city shall provide means for maintaining and improving the park. And the Duncan Park trustees had certain duties they were supposed to perform. And I did meet with Roger, and we discussed some of this. He presented this compromise idea, and I told him I still had mixed feelings. And so I was a little non-committal at that point. But one of the things that we both recognize, and I think we've all recognized in some of the memos that have flown back and forth, is that the deed from Mrs. Duncan says, here's her intent in terms of the city providing means for the maintenance and improvement of the park, and the various duties and all that. And one of the other items within that deed was passage of a ordinance acceptable to Mrs. Duncan, which establishes the Duncan Park Board and sets certain ground rules. And the original 1913 version of that ordinance was somehow lost, set aside. Something happened to it, and in 1994, it was readopted nearly as I can tell in its original wording. Because I saw, one of the notes I saw was that it's not in a form we would normally use now, but it was the 1913 form. And that 1913 ordinance says, Section 4, Funding, "No money shall be expended by said Duncan Park Commission from the city's funds unless the same shall have been first appropriated by the common council. For such purpose, said board shall, before the time of making the general appropriations ordinance of each year, make a statement in writing to the common council of the amount of money needed and the purpose for which that same is to be expended. And such sum or such part thereof, as common council shall deem reasonable, shall be included in the annual appropriation bill to be passed by said council." And we recently readopted this ordinance with new format, with a new board. We did this in, was it 2013, I believe, about that. And it's substantially the same. It says, "The commission," meaning the Duncan Park Commission, "shall annually submit to the city's finance director, not later than April 15 of each year, a proposed budget for the commission for the ensuing July, June city fiscal year. Any form complying with the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act, that proposed budget shall be submitted to city council for consideration and approval as part of the overall city budget and of the units that need city council approval. The commission shall meet as necessary to approve expenditures and otherwise manage Duncan Park." So basically, what was, what was acceptable to Mrs. Duncan, and what's in our ordinance, and what's already been adopted, codified, just came out of immunity code, is that Duncan Park Commission is supposed to be submitting a budget every year, which they haven't been. Nobody's been following this ordinance. And yet, it's here, and this is the reason it's here, is to settle these issues. So we're not talking about who should pay for what, and the city shouldn't pay for anything, or we had to set up this fund in 1994 so that there could be some kind of money for something. There always was an obligation, from the days of Martha Duncan to, including today, for the city to consider this as part of their budget. Well, Duncan Park Commission has not submitted anything. Just lately, they've come up with this $5,000 or $10,000 figure and said, "How about that?" And we're saying, "What do we do with that?" And meanwhile, we've run this tab, which is now up to $42,000. But in March of this year, and apparently also, well, in March of this year, the Duncan Park Commission voted unanimously just to pay $25,000 of that bill. And previously, we had collected about $7,900 and some odd dollars. And I think there was clear understanding by all parties, including Duncan Park Commission, because it was a unanimous vote, that that was money, money that showed up and paid. And then lately, we had this interpretation that, wait a minute, we shouldn't pay anything, the city should pay everything. I don't think either of those positions are real correct. But I do think that that, that vote to pay the $25,000, which is a little more than half of this $42,000 tab, was a valid, was a valid vote that recognized the reality of what had been run up in terms of expenses, costs on the part of the city. And because it never went through our budgeting process, nobody's right here. So basically, we got all this, it would have solved our problems in how to handle this, and nobody followed it. So here's what I'd suggest. I'd suggest that we go ahead and collect the $25,000 that the budget, that the Duncan Park Commission voted to pay. Set the rest aside as what might have been budgeted if we had been following our ordinance. And starting next year, let's, let's get, let's do this. Let's ask for a budgeted amount. Council doesn't have to include all of it in our budget. It would become council discretion. It says right in here that no, no money shall be expended by said Duncan Park Commission without, unless same shall have been first appropriated. Okay, it has to go through that process. I said last time when we were here, and we were talking about the $10,000 per year of, let's give them $10,000 and tell them to go take care of their park. That, well, normally, we have a little bit more say in how we spend our money than just appropriating a block of money and letting somebody else make all the decisions. But if it goes through this appropriation process, and we know what we're appropriating and approving for, and then say, "Okay, now go take care of your business, we agree with your numbers." Or we don't agree, and we'll give you a lesser amount. Now, you've also got this fund at the community center, which was set up apparently during lean years when the park wasn't being taken care of by philanthropists, by people who donated money. And said, "Here's some money that you can use when the money that comes from the city is not what you needed." And so I think you draw on it at that point. So whether or not the city appropriates money every year, whether it's $5,000 or $2,000. I mean, it's, we have an obligation to look at it under our ordinance. And under the deed, the city has an obligation to look at what should, what the city should be contributing. And I don't think that amount is zero. So I don't think the city pays nothing. And maybe everything we donate is in-kind labor. Maybe we run plows and lawn mowers. Maybe we just say, well, because that's substantially what this bill is, it's almost all labor. So maybe what we actually appropriate is resources of our Public Works Department, our Parks Department. And that's what you get. And then if you need more money, you take it out of your own, out of your fund, which was set up for that purpose. So that would be my suggestion. Rather than the, split it down the middle, let's take the 25 grand that you have already voted to pay. And let's get on board with a budgeting process. And I'm not willing to say at this point, yeah, let's go with 5 grand. I'm not willing to say we go with anything in particular. I say that let's, let's follow our ordinance. So that's what I would do if it were, my, my suggestion, what I would prefer to see is, we accept that and then settle it in the budget process starting in the spring.
That's what the suggestion I had also for like the snow plowing and that, you know. We've done it for years, and that could be part of our...
And that could be something we say every spring, okay, we're going to do all these things, and they're going to add up to this. And if you want to do something else, you've got this fund, and you can draw on that.
But I'm not willing to put in $5,000 in a budget today.
I don't think that's appropriate right now.
Not appropriate, not at all.
This is not budget time. This, the ordinance talks about when we adopt our budget. In the old version, it was the annual appropriation bill, now it's just budget. So I mean, the language has changed, the intent is not.
I do think it's important for the city to contribute to the care of Duncan Park as Mrs. Duncan's wishes. So as to how that number is arrived at, or what exactly that should be, is in question. But the fact that they should, that the city should contribute something in order to, say, abide by Mrs. Duncan's wishes, and to keep us in good legal standing as far as a contributor to the park, I think that's a really, really good idea. What exactly that number is, I think, needs to be arrived at. I think the number, $5,000, was thrown out there for a compromise, since it was a half a ten. But, you know, I have no issue with it being a more specific amount than that. I just, you know, appreciate the, the notion that we can say, yes, the city needs to make a contribution of the park. And it shouldn't just be a standalone, because we don't, whatever we want to do, we want to fulfill the wishes of, of Mrs. Duncan. So I'm not, as to what exactly, what we want to do with the, with Item A of unfinished business, how we want to treat that. I'm open to suggestion.
Go ahead, Josh.
Yeah, Pat, the, sorry, Pat, put you on the spot a little bit. The Lighthouse Conservancy Fund, that we just authorized the $30,000 match from, who owns that fund, whose name is on it? Is it the city's fund, or is...
Technically, the Grand Haven Area Community Foundation owns it with advice from the city.
Okay.
But it was raised by the Lighthouse Conservancy. So our, our general approach there is that we do follow the Lighthouse Conservancy's recommendations when it comes to that fund.
Okay. And with the Duncan Park Fund, same story, technically, the community foundation owns it.
And the city is the trustee, but we would only act with the advice of the Duncan Park Commission.
All right. The, had to laugh, chuckle a little bit at the numbers that have been flying around. Originally, you're willing to pay $25,000, the Duncan Park Commission was. And then upon negotiation with us, well, then it was zero. And then negotiations, it was less than your original offer of $25,000. was less than your original offer of twenty-five thousand dollars, and we kick in five thousand dollars per year. So I have to chuckle a little bit, saying, it wasn't a real negotiation, the city kind of got the big, the big tab, which, again, as we've all agreed, the city needs to pick up some percentage of the tab. I, I agree with that a hundred percent. As far as what's on the table or discussing anything as far as what we'd vote for, we're under litigation right now, regarding Duncan Park. And whatever we come up with, whatever committee comes up with, I'm not in favor of voting on anything unless our attorneys at least review the specific wording of it and say, "Yeah, that's defensible." I understand that regardless of what we come up with, whatever his name is, is probably going to sue the city anyway. But at the very least, I believe that we owe the process of due diligence to run whatever solution is by the attorney. And I, I think there's been some great ideas thrown out here. Bob, I, I think you got, everybody's got good ideas, but I'm not going to vote for anything until the attorney takes a look at it.
I believe they have.
Well, we're, we're trying to wordsmith something new right now.
No, no, actually, it wasn't, I'm saying what, you know, what we're doing with the ordinance now, as opposed to what it says clearly in Mrs. Duncan's wishes that the city contributes something. What I said is, I don't know what that number is, but I think that the city should contribute Do we vote, I'm just saying, we, we can, we can vote this down and start over? Not tonight, I don't, it's not good to wordsmith something as you go along, but it's, what do we do with the item before us? Because we could be here for hours debating this, and I just assume not.
Yeah. I think you're absolutely right, it's not good to try to put words together in a meeting like this.
I just want to be in agreement that we do owe, that the city does need to put something in its budget for the maintenance of Duncan Park, and then Duncan Park can, needs to look at and see what that amount is, and what they would, and come to an agreement as to what that contribution should be.
Well, that's why I brought up the nineteen thirteen ordinance, it was approved, it was agreeable to Mrs., Mrs. Duncan.
Yep. And that's our, and that's our responsibility, and it's our responsibility, it's the maintenance of the park for our legal, you know, for our legal position.
So, and, and years ago, we, we did do that, we, we did maintain part of the park, we took care of the trash, we took care of the plowing, and, and if they, they had something to do, that they, they needed something done, we'd go in there and take care of it. And, and, but, but now they set this, this separate fund up, and, and since they've done that, they left us completely out of it, which we shouldn't have been left out of it, we should have been contributing something to it. So, and it's a partnership, it's a partnership between us and the commission, and we need to realize that it's a partnership, it's not just them by themselves, it's not just us by ourselves. It's a park for the citizens of Grand Haven, and, and it should be a partnership, that we should, we should work together with the Duncan Park Board, and, and we need to work this thing out. I'm not saying we, maybe five thousand dollars isn't correct, but we need to do something.
So you want to postpone this?
I have a suggestion, I think we should postpone this.
For indefinitely?
Again, Denny is a person that goes to Duncan Park Board, I think he should, they should work something out between the Duncan Park Board and have Denny be a representative, and come up with a budget, or, you know, however we want to look at this. So, but I, I would suggest that we table it again until we come up with something that is acceptable.
If Josh has any questions for legality of it, and-
Yeah, yep.
Post, you know, make that mention off to him and get back to us.
I guess, we can do that, but I hate, you know, every time we turn around, we're going to, you know, incur more attorney fees when the, when the, when the, you know, black and white is pretty clear there as to what we need to do. So I hate to make, you know, lawyers, lawyers love it when you fight with each other, because they just make more money, right, Roger?
But seeing we're in litigation and everything, like Josh was saying, seeing that we're in litigation and everything else, I'd rather make sure we got it correct.
That's what it says. Okay, all right.
I think our safest thing is if we get to a point where we can follow the ordinance we already have on the books.
That's true, if we would follow the ordinance, it wouldn't be so bad.
That's right.
Then we'd be in a good place.
That's right.
We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be questioning this.
Let's just do what it says, and then we'll be good. So we need a, I need a motion to table.
Well, Josh has something to say.
Yeah, and I'll make a motion to table after that, or-
Or postpone.
Bob, postpone. Just want to say, you know, applause to everybody on every side, Roger and the commission as well. We're in a period of incredible transition and frustration with lawsuits over the last, darn near decade. So the fact that we're going through this should come as no surprise to anyone. So I, I think everybody's handled it fairly well, we've got more work to do, but just, you know, thank you for bringing it to our attention. You guys are in charge of, you're entrusted with the park. So raising the yellow flag to say, "Hey, let's try and figure something out." So, yeah, I just want to say, thanks.
We'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out. So Bob, do you want to postpone, or are you-
Yeah, let's, well, yeah, let's move to postpone until our next meeting, and come up with some better words.
Okay. Whoops, I can't say yes. Will somebody else say yes?
That kind of thing.
Okay, thanks. And then we'll vote. Fritz?
Yes.
On essa?
Yes.
Burger?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Michaela? Yes. All right, report by city council. Who wants to start?
Well, remember tomorrow is voting day, so everybody listening out there in WAWL, get out and vote. I mean, I know the last time I ran for mayor against Michaela-
Oh, yeah.
And the turnout was terrible. It was low, both, it was really low. There's nothing really major. I'm hoping maybe this infrastructure part would actually get people out there to vote and, and get out there and vote for your candidates. Give them, give them support, do, show them that you really mean something. It's one of the rights that we have as being Americans, that we get to go out there and make our vote and get to be heard. If you don't vote, don't complain. That's my whole thing, is that, you know, if you're going to complain, make sure you go out there and vote for it, so let people hear your voice. Other than that, I wish everybody good luck. Who knows? And mayor, I still want to go on record saying you did a fine job. It's been a long time, we worked together for quite a few years, I have utmost respect for you and all the things you've done. There's times that we didn't see eye to eye, and, but you know what, at the end of the day, we are still talking.
Still friends.
We still made phone, we still made phone contacts, still talked to each other, and still made a decision that we helped out, so it's been my honor to be your mayor pro temp for all these years.
Awesome. Thank you, Roger.
I'll echo that, I, I'm going to miss Jerry out here, up here, so it's going to be different, so, but, she's done a great job for us, she's been committed to this community for a lot of years, and I just want to say thank you to Jerry.
Thank you.
I've got just two items. One, Bob and I, well, Bob and I were both of them. One, we trick or treated and passed out candy, excuse me, we were the passer-outers with the trick or treat.
I didn't pass out.
I don't know, yeah, you pass out. Any rate, Bob Builder and Woody, the sheriff, passed out a lot of candy at the depot, and we had a great time. So I enjoyed doing that with Bob. And then also, we attended the one hundred year anniversary of the American Legion, Conklin Post Twenty-Eight, and it was great, they did a video showing at the movie theater about the post and the impact of the American Legion on our community and in communities throughout the United States. And really, fan, fascinating story about our post, and I believe it's going to be airing on PBS, I think they said, sometime around Veterans Day of next year.
Yeah, they got some more work to do.
They got some work to do with it, yeah. And then echo comments about serving with Jerry, indeed. And then also, hey, it's an election tomorrow, I may not be here, so to all of you, I want to say thank you for a great four years. And with that-
Same here, who knows if I'll be here.
There you go.
All right, well, I'll echo all the good things we have to say about Mayor, Mayor McHale's term, you have a fine legacy, we intend to build on that, so we will carry on, and thank you for everything. I did attend some meetings in the past couple of weeks. Yes, the trick or treat was fun, that was, that was a good use of the depot, we had a lot of people come through there, because of really crappy weather. So it, it really served that well, and I enjoyed the American Legion documentary rededication. Two meetings that I went to out of town, I went to, I rode along with Pat and Tom Manderscheid and Earl Bears to the airport review at MDOT in Lansing. We got a pretty clean review, so Earl is doing a really nice job, and everybody remarked on how usually these can be a little contentious with a lot of finger pointing and berating of the airport management, it was really clean. So Earl is doing a great job out there, taking care of business, addressing all the things. I think the biggest single thing they complained about was, they think they found a tree within fifty feet of the center line of a runway in the edges of woods, and they wanted him to take it down. So, okay, if that's the worst problem we got, he's doing a good job. So we got a good, clean review out of that, so our, our report is being well-run. The other thing is, I went to this meeting that Representative Sly, Sly, Slag?
Slaw.
Never did know how to say his name.
Alec Slaw.
Bradley Slaw, and Senator Victory Held in Holland, Shoreline Erosion. The real meeting was about getting permits to either put rocks or some kind of armor on your beach, or expedite permitting, so they can save houses that are about to fall in the water, and it seems to be a little more dire problem down that way than it is right around here, but it's pretty much a shoreline problem up and down Lake Michigan shoreline. So they talked quite a bit about that, there was a lot of this stuff about, well, you knew this was coming, why didn't you do something sooner? There again, you know, wheels sometimes turn a little slower than you'd like. So they were talking about getting permits issued within a matter of like ten days or two weeks, and people in the audience are saying, "What am I going to do tomorrow?" Well, okay, it's, it's quite an urgent problem, and really, that's just the permitting side of it. That's where, that's where Deagle lives, you know, in their permitting process. But they are trying to be a little more accommodating. Could they have jumped on this sooner? Well, maybe. I won't make excuses for them, and I think that they're making a honest effort to try to get permits, because they also have several statutes that they have to try to satisfy. They don't have a lot of permission, a lot of wiggle room on satisfying statutes, which were intended to protect shorelines, protect the environmental features, and those have, can have long-term effects. So they're kind of in a situation where they still have to do due diligence with respect to the statutes and keep people's houses from falling in the lake. So they're working on that. And we may see that here too with some of our permitting. I know that Pat sent us a note about, we've been working with the township on a, one particular problem where we had to provide access, which I think was a really good thing we can do locally. Any component of this permitting, which is local, we can, we can throw resources at and help. Unfortunately, most of it is out of town, so. It wasn't necessarily a good news meeting, but it was interesting, and people expressed a lot of frustration. And yes, the water will go down, and the winds will be a little quieter, but it'll come back too, so this won't go away. And, like I said, I attended a number of meetings, they were all very interesting, and I guess I'll leave it at that.
All right, thanks. Yeah, it's, I've had a great time in my years serving as mayor of the city with my city council members. It's been an education, a real challenge. There's high points and low points, and there's some unfinished points, and those are always regretful. But I've had the opportunity to serve and work with a great number of amazing people, it's my privilege to do so. This position has afforded the great opportunity to work side by side with other decision-makers locally, statewide, and at a national level. And I want to take this opportunity to say thanks to Pat McGinnis, our city manager, and all of City Hall staff, the clerk's office, the city manager's office, and the folks upstairs in finance. They are a great group of people that are extremely dedicated to the city, and I count many of them as friends. I remember my first DDA meeting, as a mayor, you're a part of the DDA board, and the beginning, they were not my, they were not my best cheerleaders, I think we had a bit of a, we were a bit at odds about different things, but I won them over with my charm, and, and I left leaving a different story. So I want to say thanks, the men and women, all the men and women that serve on our various boards and commissions. Thank you for all your volunteer hours. I also want to mention the Board of Light and Power, because they do an amazing job. You know, over the last couple of years, come to have a much greater understanding of what they do and what they have done, what their job is, and I appreciate the time that I have gotten to know them better. They've helped me to get a better understanding of the power business, and I have a lot of respect for all people, whether it's the board or the, the men and women that work at, at the Sims plant. They do an amazing job to keep that going, and hope to be able to burn off all that coal and to build something next, in the, in the next couple of years, so, and keep that snow melt going. So some of my most treasured days as mayor were serving as president of the Memorial Day, and that's always a high honor, to honor those ones that, those soldiers that have given their lives in the, in service in our country. Nine eleven remembrances are always very, very special to me. All the folks at the VFW and the, and the Legion, and of course, Coast Guard Festival. I just have so much respect for people that wear the uniform, that have played such a big part in the defense of this country, and my hat's off to them, and much appreciated to all of them. And I just thank everybody for their support over the years. I remember when I first ran for council, I was known as the East Side Woman, and, but I have, I've had a great time, I've had a great run, and as, I think, who is it, Lou Gehrig, that said, even though he was, and I don't have a disease, so I don't want to say that, but he said, you know, "I, I feel like the luckiest man on earth." And having been able to do this for as many years as I have, I feel like one of the luckiest people, because this is a great community, we've done great things. It's a six square miles, ten thousand people, but we have an airport, we have a marina, we have, twenty-five percent of our land is parkland. We, we do, we, we, we perform way beyond our size and our scope, and I think we do a great job, and it's because we have amazing people that are generous, and they're kind, and they, we take care of each other, and I appreciate everybody that I've worked with, everybody that I've gotten to know. You're a great group of people, and, and yes, tomorrow is election day, so go out and do your best. So for that, I want to pass it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of items, the Army Corps of Engineers is having their annual stakeholders meeting on, or November twelfth, which is a week from tomorrow. Joy Gash is going down with Ron Matthews from Verplank, very interested in the dredging aspects, in the afternoon, they'll be talking about, low water datum is what they call it, which I think is, maybe they should change that, they call it the low water datum. And if anybody wants to go on that, please let me know, you know, we would plan on leaving here mid-morning and coming back late afternoon, early evening, maybe later in the evening, depending on what we want to stay for. But unless council members are going, I, I do not plan on going, because Joy is a good representative of our harbor users group and can, can do a good job representing us, but if you'd like to go, I'm, I'm happy to go along. Ottawa County Diversity Forum is November fifteenth, which is a week from Friday, in Holland, and they, they would like two people from each municipality to attend. So I don't know if anybody from city council is wanting to go, I'd like to know who, if you are, and I could attend that with you, it's eight to four PM on Friday the fifteenth.
Might have to ask that after tomorrow, Pat.
Yeah, yeah.
I will look forward to following up, because-
We'll have to ask this tomorrow.
Yes, I will do that. Just wanted to get that, and maybe penciled in.
Three of us might not be here. It'll be Bob, Bob or Denny.
I, I can commit to it.
Bob or Denny can-
Going on the fifteenth?
Yes, I am. I told Bergman I would go.
Okay, so did you register, do you need us to-
No, I didn't.
Okay, we will get you registered.
Okay.
And also, the, I've got these brochures, God Bless America brochures, this is our banner program for two thousand twenty. We're going to be putting patriotic banners on all of our light poles throughout town, and what the sponsor can do is recognize your family veteran with a custom photo and their name and branch of service and the years that they served, and then you can put your name at the bottom, whether it's your company or your family, that's a custom banner, or you can just go with a generic banner, recognizing one of the branches of our military. The generic banners are two hundred and fifty dollars, the custom banners are three hundred- Uh, the generic banners are $250, the custom banners are $300. And you get the banner when the program is over. And I think you're familiar with the size of these banners and what they are. Uh, and this year, the, the fundraiser of course is for your Main Street program, uh, but also for a veteran suicide prevention program. They're going to make a donation, I'm not sure the exact entity yet that they're going to select for that recipient, but I do believe they have decided it will go towards a veteran suicide prevention program. We've got some of these very nice brochures here and anything you can do to spread the word, I'll be going to the VFW, I'm sorry, the American Legion meeting tomorrow to present this to them, but, uh, DDA is very excited and we hope to fill all of our banners up with red, white and blue. And speaking of red, white and blue, I too want to thank Mayor McHaleb, she's, uh, been a great boss, learned an awful lot from her, I've listened a lot, spent a lot of time with her and gotten a great deal of guidance and, uh, education these past 16 years I've worked with her. Since the day I got here, she was sitting right up there at my very first meeting and she's still there today and I have learned a heck of a lot from her and I'm very grateful for years of service and I hope that education continues beyond tonight. I know she's going to be out there very active in the community and I look forward to working with her on a lot of other, maybe some of those unfinished things will not remain unfinished, so I'm looking forward to that, so thank you, your honor, that's all I have.
Thank you. So, general business call the audience. Anybody like to address council at this time? Michael, it's good to see you.
Mike Weaver, so, uh, congratulations, I guess, on, uh, a job well done and your retirement, so you know you have a lot of free time.
All right.
Good for you.
You betcha.
And one of these guys gets to pick up the slack. So best of luck to both of you. Uh, just a couple of quick comments, went to the zoning workshop this morning, would like to see the city publish, uh, we, oh, there's probably 15 people there, I would say 10 of them had, were, were working for the city or the entities, so there was only a few citizens, the average people there. But, uh, what was brought up is there's an online survey that you can do, but nobody knows about it. So anyways, we're spending money in the newspaper, why don't we put that in there? Uh, we've got two more coming, so I'd like to see that. Couple of just other quick comments, um, in regards, regards to the wells situation, I get both sides of that equation, um, but I think it's kind of interesting that the city allowed a brand-new home right in my neighborhood, it's probably worth $350, to put in a well and skip hooking up the city water. So it's kind of a bit of a double standard to tell all these people, hey, we've, you've got good water, you can't use it for a well, but we're going to let this gentleman use it for not just his sprinkling, but for his house. Don't know what the rationale was for it, but that was right on Leggett Street and I just don't understand how that happens, but it did. So, uh, thought you made a great decision on not buying that house. Quite frankly, it's a house. It's an affordable home, you guys want that. I crunched the numbers on the payment, 127,000, it's around 600 bucks a month for somebody to buy that house. At 175, it's like 800 a month. You're not going to get 1,400. And it stays on a tax roll and quite frankly, if you think about it, it has no value unless you bulldoze it. So you were going to have 175,000 dollars and it's something you were going to bulldoze. So just, uh, thought that was a wise decision not to go there. And the last thing is in regards to Duncan Park Board, and I think the mayor said it best, that property was handed over in its own unique fashion with the terms of the city, the city needed to take care of it. Budget seems to be 10,000 a year. Um, if I had the recommendation, if you want to keep yourself out of legal hot water, you write that check every year, take care of it going forward because, and then maybe ask the Parks Board or the Duncan Board to kick money back to you, but technically you really should meet the terms of that deal. If you don't, you just leave another legal, uh, opening for somebody to come in and I think you've already learned how much that costs. The 10 grand looks real cheap if you compare it to your legal bills, so. Anyways, that being said, mayor, congratulations on a, a good long run and I wish you all the best of luck at the election tomorrow. Take care.
Thanks, Michael. Anyone else? If not, we will adjourn. See you all on the streets.